I'll call to order the November 27, 2023 school committee meeting. We are going to be entering into executive session and resuming in open session at 6:30. Somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to enter into executive session and to reconvene an open session at 6:30 pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 21A 3 for the purposes of approving minutes from the executive session held November 13th as an open meeting law may have detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
And to provide an update on negotiations with HEA units A, B, C, and D as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares.
I so declare. I'll second. Okay, all in favor? Matt, Ally, Tim, Carrie, Michelle, and I'm an I as well. Okay. Good evening, welcome back. We are just reconvening from executive session for the November 27, 2023 school committee meeting. I'm going to read a quick statement. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the town of Hangum in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A Section 20F so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harper Media recording and also recording on Zoom. Is there anyone else in the audience or online recording? Can you throw your hand up? No, okay. So moving on, we have one set of minutes to approve. Somebody wants to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve. Sorry, I've got my laptop tonight. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the, oh my gosh, sorry, thank you, November 13th meeting.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. Those are adopted. Okay, so tonight we have special guests coming and they have a meeting, so Hangum Sports Partnership has their meeting tonight, so we've changed the agenda around a bit, so if you can just bear with me, we've got item five is to receive an update on the wellness center from the Hangum Sports Partnership, and then after that, item six will be to discuss the naming of the wellness center and act as appropriate if we still see fit. So before I introduce our guests, just want to refresh everybody, back in October 2021, the school committee first heard the proposal from a couple of members of the Hangum Sports Partnership about an idea to take on, take over the existing structure at Hangum High School and turn it into a usable health and wellness center for all Hangum High School students. Sorry. Since then, we've heard many updates on the project. I thought it would be beneficial for the public to get the full history of the project as we're getting it closer to a reality now and because we will also be discussing the possible naming tonight. So we've got Kevin Quilty and I believe Ray Estes is going to be presenting tonight. So come on up. If you don't mind stating your name and your address, that would be great.
Kevin Quilty, 496 Main Street. Thanks for having us. I thought I would just start off by giving a quick history of how the project even evolved or came about, and then I think Ray will take it from that point. Most people who know me know that I have two children that went through the Hangum School System all the way and were very involved in sports in the high school as well as in college. So everybody who hears me talk about this project thinks that that's kind of my angle for it, and it really isn't. Four years ago or so, my nephew came, was leaving the middle school and going to the high school, and my nephew has autism. It was a very scary time in his family for the big high school for this young boy, but he had just had a tremendously, just a great experience at the middle school, and so we were kind of excited. The one thing that stuck out to me was my sister saying to me, wow, we're just coming out of the middle school, they have a nice little fitness room where, as she said, some of these kids can get some energy out during the day, during their day, and there's really nothing like that at the high school. I didn't, it was kind of like a brother-sister conversation that went in one ear and out the other, and I didn't really pay much attention to it, but it did kind of stick with me a little bit. When he came to the high school, the experience was great, however, what I learned having, not having a special needs child is a lot of times the things in the school can go great, and then when they go home, the world is a little different. They're not, they're not out with other kids, they just go home and they play video games or they stay in their house or whatnot. So I suggested to my sister, why don't we, why don't we have Riley come and up to a gym or fitness center that my kids go to and just go see it? And her first response was, you know, that's, that's really not what he does, that's your kid's thing, that's not really his thing. And what I said to her then, and what I try to tell everyone and I would like to ask you people is, try not to think of a fitness center as a gym in 19, I always say 85, maybe I'm dating myself, or 95. Don't think of it as a traditional gym, at least for this conversation. And I said, where they go, it's more, it's more than just kids sitting on a bench press lifting weights. And I just kind of left it at that and said, let me take him up there and just check it out. So I brought him up there, he obviously thought it was really cool, there was a bunch of kids his age in there, and he wanted to go immediately. Because I work near there, I went to pick him up his first week one day, and when I came, saw him walking across the gym, and there were two upper-class high school students there doing, doing their own thing, and they both high-fived him as he walked out and said, "See you at school tomorrow, Triple R," which was a nickname they had given him. And my heart just kind of melted for a second, I was like, oh my God. This, this, this is what I tried, I wish I had videoed it because I went home and told my sister and I said, this is why he should go to something like this. And that's what made me start to think, you know, we need, we need a facility like that at the high school, we need something better, we need something that's inclusive for everyone, whether it be special needs, whether it be for athletes, whether it be for, for just a ninth grade boy or girl who feels intimidated to walk into the facility that they have now. So that, you know, one step further than that, he was encouraged to join Unified Basketball by, I believe it was a parent educator at the time who was running it. And again, if no one's ever been to one of those things to watch these kids mixing with other kids, it's just really a special thing. So he just had an incredible experience and really, a lot of it was because the kids were great, and I just felt if we can create more space, in this case, this facility, where kids can do that, whether, and it's, you know, I say it's outside of the school, it's obviously within the school complex, but it's outside of it, that it would just be such a positive thing for all the kids because I saw in the unified sports side, both groups of kids are getting a lot out of this. So those two events really showed me the power of inclusivity, if you will, of these kids. So my goal really was to, when I got on Sports Partnership, was to kind of present, we have a building here that's a, that's a great spot, great location, and we're kind of not really using it, in my opinion, to its, to its best ability, if you will. And I went and spoke with the athletic director and just kind of said, oh, listen to my idea, and of course naively, my financial number in my head at the time was not what it's come to now, I thought it would be just easy, we can just fix this up a little bit and can have the kids go in there, it'd be a great space. It's obviously become much bigger than that, but we really tried to do the right thing and talk to the athletic directors, talk to the principal, talked to a number of superintendents as they've come, come through, but really tried to just see if it was something we could do. So my real reason for, for me stepping up before Ray is to say that there's so much more than, a fitness center is so much more than what I know originally I would think of, and most people think of, oh, we're going to get squat racks and bench presses and the football team's weight room. And I, I tell people all the time, if we were just doing this to build the varsity teams' weight room, you know, I, I wouldn't be as involved for as long as I have been. I really think, I just really think none of us, or most people won't understand the true positive effect this can have on these kids until it's built. So that's a little bit of the hard part is we have to kind of continue to sell it to people, but I do think, like anything, once it's up and running and the kids, I've seen it firsthand with the, the kids in the high school are tremendous with the, with all the students who participate in the unified stuff, and I just think it will take on, it will just, it will just grow and it'll be really popular with all these kids. That's pretty much kind of my, you know, and so at that point, I should say, when I joined Sports Partnership, I thought what a platform that would be to kind of, to spearhead this, otherwise, you know, I joke with people, I would be standing outside the bagel shop like asking for donations and we would never, you know, this would be a 20-year project. You know, we decided that we know how tough it is from a budget standpoint around town in general, never mind the schools, but everything. And so when sitting with Sports Partnership people and Deb McCarthy as the president, it was great that she embraced it right away. Everybody thought it was kind of a neat project after the prior project that we had done was probably 10 or 12 years ago in terms of the Fields Project when it actually started. And it was, seemed like a good time for us to kind of take something on and really give So that's kind of where the Sports Partnership, and then, and like I said, we've just, we, we knew that for us to do this, you know, the funding was going to have to be private, it wasn't going to come from within, and so that's been our major task over the last year. And with that kind of, oh, I will say, in talking with the people at SNAP and the fact that they, you know, Warren Pelisser and Fred Hussey a little bit, they've embraced it, so they were, they were our first donor, you know, with a sizable donation, knowing that it was going to really benefit their program as well. So with that, I think I'll just kind of let you, you know, let you know that that's kind of where it stemmed from and from the idea, and I'll turn it over to Ray to take us from that point forward.
Good evening, Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street. If you could put this, the slide deck, the first one, the five, seven pager, whatever it is. Yeah, great. Okay, so thanks really very much for the opportunity to be here and give this update. We know that we've told this story many, many times, but it occurred to us and that's made a, made a great suggestion that maybe not a lot of people had heard the story, and this was an opportunity now that we've been working on this for over two years to really bring people up to speed on where we are with the project, to reintroduce it to folks who maybe haven't been paying attention, maybe didn't see the articles in the anchor, and particularly now that we've made some great strides with fundraising, we still have a ways to go, but it's, it's a very exciting point in the project. So it's a great opportunity, particularly at this time when we're celebrating being thankful and being together, to celebrate something like this where, as Kevin said, we're able to try to give back. So if I have the slide, right? So everybody's read this before, I'm sure, HSP's mission. So interestingly, I feel like this project has allowed our mission to evolve even more. We're particular about what fits inside our mission in terms of evaluating grants and other opportunities, but this is something that has kind of grown out of, you know, a long identified need for facilities at the high school. As many of you may know, some 20 years ago, HSP tried to do something and had a local architect draw up some rudimentary plans. Eight years ago, the school committee then tried to put forward what was then called the Hawk Project, which was going to be a health and wellness center. At the time, the health curriculum was expanding in the state, and there was a need for fitness facilities, and there was a plan devised to expand and build something. It wasn't the right time. And since then, you know, we, we built a new school, we're now building another new school, the Fields Project, all of these come with public money, the override, again, public money, tax increases, and we recognize and we're very sensitive to the fact that it's a, it's a big ask, and that's why, as Kevin suggested, we realized in talking about this that, that we were going to have to really invoke our mission in a private fundraising way. If I could have the next slide, please. So everyone in the room knows this building, for those of you at home, if you haven't seen this building, it's in the back of the high school. In the corner here used to be the old concession stand, and very often, the track team uses some of the bay doors toward the other end. It's a lot of storage, there's maintenance equipment in there, it's used for a variety of reasons right now by the high school. And really, the plan originally was to renovate this building. We thought that that was the, maybe the most cost-effective and the easiest thing to do. And as we explored that possibility after speaking with the school committee and said, hey, you know, go ahead, see what you can do, and we engaged with a local architect and who engaged engineers, and we had the building checked out and made a determination that yes, we could do some sort of renovation to it, and what might that look like? And we began to develop some, some early schematic plans. As that process moved forward, we pivoted to a different architect because of timing, and that architect, if you could go to the next slide, please, developed what you see here, and this is the current design that was developed earlier this year. Through a local contractor, we've had this cost estimated through schematic plans only, and that's been the target for our fundraising efforts at 1.5 million. The next, the next phase, as you know, is securing an orders project manager, and that process has begun. In fact, today, we reviewed the submissions by OPM applicants, and a decision on that will be coming very soon. I think we're scheduling interviews for next week. And then once that OPM is onboard, the designer selection process for an architect will go forward. Now, we engaged an architect which brought us to this point. That architect may submit a proposal, but law requires that we go out to public bid process for architectural services, so that, that's, as you know, what, what is going to be the next step. If you go to the next slide, please. So the timeline, we developed this a couple of months ago, and I think there have been a number of conversations with, with folks in your offices about this, hoping that we could move forward as expeditiously as possible, but also jumping through all the, all the procedural hoops that are, that are required. The timing is somewhat sensitive because a lot of donors who have contributed so far have expressed a real excitement about this. Some of them have kids in the school now and would love to have them benefit from it. Others just want to see something come to fruition quicker than sometimes things happen in this town. So we, we recognize it's a, it's an aggressive schedule, but almost everything we try to accomplish is, is tied to an aggressive schedule. So you can see where we are right now. So we're in what we're calling the community phase of fundraising, and we secure the OPM and the architect next, go through a design process, move forward with design development, go out to bid once a firm cost estimate is secured, and then go through the construction process. If you could go to the next slide, please. This is just kind of a breakdown of that last section, the OPM and design, selection process, design development, the selection of a general contractor, permitting, which we believe will only be a building permit for a new structure. We had pivoted, as I said, from a renovation to new construction because in talking with the engineers and the architect that we were working with earlier this year, it became clear that building new would be more cost-effective and likely take less time. So that's the path that we have been following. So we, we believe that this, you know, we can get there in about a year, a little bit over a year. And I say "we," it's the collective "we." This is a school project, and we recognize that, but we feel, you know, we're, we're a strong and supportive partner in this, and we look forward to being involved throughout the whole process as much as, as much as we can. As I said, we have other members of the board today participated in the OPM review process with Aisha, and I think that went very well. We all seem to be, at least those of us who've reviewed the material so far, seem to be in agreement, so it's moving forward initially. If you go to the next slide, please. Fundraising. So we started the fundraising effort in earnest, really the planning for it in summer of '22, and we initiated the first aspect of our fundraising plan in September, and in just a little over a year, we're just over a million dollars. We're, we're really excited about that progress. We feel like this is a critical point in the fundraising with the end of the year coming, folks making decisions about who they're going to be donating to, tax benefits of doing that. We launched a community challenge based on a significant private donation and HSP's own pledge of additional funds to this. As I think you know, we've pledged a total of $300,000 toward this, 150 initially, and another 150 will come. We've already started the account with you with $100,000 of that money, and we're thrilled to be able to, you know, continue this community phase of fundraising, and hopefully you'll be hearing a lot more about it in the coming weeks. Slide, please. So I would leave you with that, at this aspect of the presentation, and happy to take any questions that anyone might have.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, Carrie?
First of all, thank you very much for your efforts on this. I think I hear, I've talked with Kevin about it at the very beginning, and I share that vision, I think it's great. Kind of to that end, does the cost of this, the 1.5 million, does that include the equipment in the building or just the, the structure itself?
So we, we haven't had real discussions about equipment because we don't really know how the high school administration would want to equip it. The vision for this space was always a place for students to congregate, to gather, and to engage in any number of activities, whether it be, you know, fitness, working out, meeting, talking with friends, playing games, it could be scheduling of a yoga class or some other academic program, it could be club organizational meetings, it could be any number of things that, you know, that, that's really on the school administration to program. You know, our thinking was, we have a vision for this space, we have some ideas about how we think it could be used well, but that's not really up to us, and I think we recognize that. So we haven't factored in equipment because we just don't know how exactly it'll be used. In my business, we use the term vanilla box, right? So the plan is, at this point, to deliver a, once it's constructed, it'll be, you know, a completed building with all mechanical systems, bathroom facilities that are required, you know, appropriate finishes, but in terms of equipment, that's a discussion that I think will have to happen down the road. I think we could be involved in that, I just don't know the answer.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I would hope as these conversations happen on the school side and with HSP that we think about accessible equipment too.
Absolutely.
Just in line of what Kevin was saying with that too.
Absolutely.
I think it's very important, so thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point, and I think that's something that we'll be discussing during our budget processes too as we look to the future for this, and they also have maybe be able to use some of the equipment that they already have at the high school.
That would be good.
Yeah. Anyone else? Michelle?
Yeah, I think just in the, I think what we're all getting at is that we just want to be sure that this is funded through private donations, as you guys have done an amazing job getting so far, because we all recognize how tight the budgets are on the school side, so I think that's just where the, the thoughts are coming from. But I mean, it's an amazing project, and Kevin in particular, I want to thank you for your words, I think it was a, as we came off of Thanksgiving, a nice reminder of why, why we're all here, right? Particularly since both of our kids just celebrated their five years out of Hangum High School at their reunion, but it's just so great to see the community involvement and sort of the smiles on people's faces in the audience as we're talking about this project, because I think it really is going to benefit so many kids in this community. So thank you.
Does anybody in the public have any questions? If you can raise your hand, if you do. No. All right, good. So then we'll move over to the next item, which is for the committee to discuss the naming of the wellness center at Hangum High School and act as appropriate. So the town has a naming bylaw that was put into effect a number of years ago, that bylaw was just updated the last town meeting. We needed to wait until the select board went through their naming policy, which they did earlier in the month. So the naming, renaming, and other designation of individual rooms, areas or subareas within public building or areas shall be by the department that is in charge of that area. So we have jurisdiction over the schools, therefore, we would have the, we would have the ability to name anything that has an area that constitutes less than 25% of the public lands or a public building. So that's why we're talking about this today. And I know HSP has a proposal as far as what the name would be, and there's a really nice reason behind it, so I thought we could hear that and then discuss.
For a second, please. So I'm gonna let Kevin tell the story because he's the one who really introduced the name first, which we all embraced immediately.
So I'd like to, I'd like to tell you there was a real scientific approach to this whole thing, but when we were in the early stages of really just talking amongst our group, and I'm not sure if we had, had come to the school committee or not at this point to, our first, our first visit in front of you guys was really just to ask for permission to look into if we could even do this. And so I was, I'd like to have a great story to tell you, but this is going to be bad. I was sitting at my desk one day when I was probably supposed to be working and thinking about this project and knowing that a lot of people who hear of these projects refer to Ducksbury, one of our, our league rivals, and they have, they're the Ducksbury Dragons, and they have the Dragons Den is where their workout is, and a lot of these places, you know, for, for those who don't know, Hull are the Pirates, Gasset's the Skippers, Citrus the Sailors, or the Harbor Men. So I literally Googled, where do Harbor Men and Harbor Women work? And it didn't come right up, but within the writing, I saw the doc, and it said something about where men and women I, I saw the dock where, and it said something about where men and women would socialize. And I thought, how perfect is that? I mean, this is a, the harbor man, you know, the theme, it's, it's an easy name. And it's where harbor men and harbor women go to work and socialize, which is kind of exactly what we want. It was simple. I, I will tell a quick funny story that the picture that Ray showed, I was showing to an alumni who, who we were soliciting money from. And it didn't have, it didn't have the name on it. And I had shared the, and, and I had shared the idea of the name. And his first comment after looking at the picture was, why is there no name on it? And I thought that was, you know, it was a new picture. That was the new picture. I thought he'd be more excited about the picture. And he said, why? Where's the name? I said, well, we have to go through a process first. It's not, we can't, you know, post the name all over the place. There's a process to, to get it approved and everything. And he was like, okay, okay. Because I just love the name. And I was like, oh, okay. That's a good reason. But, uh, so that's really where that, you know, the dock came from. It seemed to stick. I, I've heard people, I've heard kids talking about it. I mean, all of us have probably talked to hundreds of people maybe in terms of, and, and I will admit, sometimes people say the dock and then you give them that line. It's where harbor men and women go to work and socialize. And they're like, oh, I like that, you know? So it just really worked right away. I mean, it, it's kind of like this project. We, we found very few people that, it's kind of funny. I've lived in this town 25 years. There's very few things that come up where nobody has some type of issue with, and we really haven't found one with this, so. Well, I will say you got that Foster was almost unanimous. And that was, that was the first one I noticed. So we're turning the tides. But that's, that's really where the, what's that? Correct. That's really where the dock came from, if you want to take the rest of it.
So with that, our, our proposal is to name this facility the Dock. In addition, as, as, as Kevin said, you know, it's, it's, it really, not only does it evoke the, the kind of visual aesthetic of the sea and harbor men and harbor women. But we really think it's in keeping with Hingham's tradition. And Hingham is a very traditional town. And, and we feel that it, it kind of sticks in line with, with its values and sensibilities. In addition to the name, we have secured a significant donation. We have discussed with that donor, the possibility of having name recognition on the outside of the building. And we were very excited about it. And we wanted to propose to you that we have the Dock powered by New Balance. And we received a donation from Jim Davis's family foundation. He doesn't live in Hingham. He doesn't know Hingham. He has a connection to Hingham and through that connection whom a number of us know. He learned about the project, was excited about the project. Learned that our track team wears New Balance uniforms, among others. And was very interested in, in learning more. When he learned more, he agreed to, to donate. And we're thrilled by that. And we believe that once folks in town know who the identity of that, that donor is, that will be kind of a, kind of an enthusiastic push to our fundraising campaign. So we're thrilled to present the Dock powered by New Balance this evening. And we've talked about donor recognition at this point. As you know, from the Fields Project, there were many, many levels of donor recognition that started at $250 and went up to the highest donor. They were done in, in a variety of ways, from names on a, on a board, on the concession building to signage posted at different places around the athletic complex and other opportunities. And we would certainly look forward to discussing opportunities like that with you to recognize the donors for this project. That is really all we have on that. And I think I would leave you with our short version of this video.
HSP was born in 1995 with the purpose to enhance existing athletic programs. Our impact has grown tremendously and with the help of the community, we proudly support all youth, high school and unified sports. Almost $2.5 million has been reinvested within Hingham through grants, scholarships, seed money for new programs and facility improvement. Our next endeavor is to build the Dock, a 2,500 square foot workout and wellness building in Hingham High. A space where all students need their best through fitness and wellness.
The Dock would be a huge step forward for Hingham High School. We're very thankful for the support of HSP and the work they're doing to organize our community, bringing the Dock project to Hingham High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Ming's Sports Partnership. You're the best.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay, so any questions?
I'm hesitant just because everybody in Hingham has a problem. Does this open up a harbor box about corporate sponsorship?
It seems a new direction that we're going in.
That was what the naming bylaw just specifically did. Yeah. So we had talked about during the Sustainable Budget Task Force, looking for ability to grow revenue and get more, more opportunities like that. So that's what the naming bylaw changed. So we are the guinea pigs. We're the first ones presented with this issue and opportunity.
I'm not opposed to it. I'm just recognizing that that's a very different direction.
Tim, when we started this project, the bylaw hadn't, I, I think they worked on that bylaw for three years, three years. So these guys can probably attest, we sat in meetings and I was like, we're not doing that. It's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen. And then it came about.
Yeah.
And I will say, I, I think, because as Ness just said, you guys will be the first ones, which is always the thing. But I actually think this is the perfect first one because I feel like we're dipping the toe in the water because it's not known as the New Balance Building. It's known as the Dock.
Big font as the name of the building.
On that, on the,
On the, at least on the markup.
Yeah. So, but the building will be known as the Dock.
Okay.
Is, is the way I look at it. But anyways.
I'm, I'm not opposed. I'm just acknowledging that that's a new direction we're going in and sort of seems like.
Trust me, I didn't think we'd get there in, in the town either, but we are.
Okay.
It does. It has that shaggle.
It's a good point.
So one of the things,
We have a policy that says that no advertising of commercial products or services will be permitted on school buildings or at school property. So that's something we would need to take up.
With policy. That's right. Yeah. Yeah. And we knew that because of the timing with the select board vote just a couple of weeks ago, we wanted to be able to have this discussion.
Right. And then we'll retro, we'll go back and look at any policy that we now need to review. Yep.
Awesome.
I guess this is a backhanded way of maybe getting the support from the whole school committee here and getting what everybody might feel or think about that.
Yep, that makes sense.
Right, sorry.
So to that point, when you, if anyone was at the football game on Thanksgiving or any other sporting event, you'll notice that there are banners that get hung on the fences. That started maybe six or seven years ago, I want to say, maybe longer. HSP has had a banner on there for a long time, although we're a nonprofit. But there are commercial enterprises that, and they pay money and it goes to the boosters and that helps support the teams when there isn't money in the budget. And so that's kind of a longstanding thing. And as, as Ness mentioned, part of this process in developing the amended bylaw for naming started with a field and court study that started four years ago now. And part of that process that we were pleased to, to participate in involves the entire sports community in town. And talking about ways to improve not just the facilities, but also the experience for, for our youth, right? And, and time and time again, stories were told about restrictions on use of corporate names. And, you know, nobody's looking to, you know, name the field the, you know, Penzoil turf field, right? But 10 years ago, we did erect a scoreboard in the multipurpose field. And it was paid for by Best Chevrolet. It's not the Best Chevrolet scoreboard or, but it's proudly, proudly donated by Best Chevrolet. And so we think it's time, and we've talked about this a lot on our board. It, it's, it's really encouraging to see this town kind of move forward, kind of holding on to its traditions and its values, right? But at the same time, moving forward with new, younger families moving to town, with new ideas and new ways of doing things that can still hold on to old traditions and values, but make way for the changes that I think need to happen. So we're excited that the bylaw was able to move forward after that study. The naming bylaw committee that took three years because of COVID to finish their work. But it was a, it was a lengthy and substantive, comprehensive process. And specifically, that corporate restriction was removed and it was purposeful. And it was exactly because of that discussion that went on.
I think the money from corporations is exactly where we want to be. I'm not opposed, like, I think taken to the extreme, and this is not at all where we're going with this, is having the corporations then be able to have a say of how we use the buildings. And I know that's not what we're talking about.
For sure. Yeah, absolutely.
So I, kind of jumping off that question, I agree. I think any way to generate more revenue in this town is, I know this is revenue, but it's a good thing. So what would happen if Crow Point Pizza said, we want, we're gonna pay $400,000 tomorrow? I, I know we'd be thrilled. And I forget Crow Point Pizza, anybody. What, I guess, I don't even know who I'm asking, but like, have, have you considered that? Again, we'd love to have another corporate sponsor that would give a ton of money.
Yeah, we, we, we have considered it. Ultimately, that's not really up to us. Part of the naming policy that was adopted by the select board just last month, which was required as part of the amended bylaw that passed at town meeting this year, indicates that an agreement for naming drafted by town council has to be executed. So that, and it says standard form agreement. I don't know what that looks like because we haven't experienced before. So as Kevin said, this is a novel approach. And we haven't discussed any length of time, perpetual, five years, 10 years. I, I don't really know what that'll be. I think our thinking is that this is gonna be the Dock powered by New Balance for however long you people decide it should be. Yeah.
That was gonna be my other question maybe for us is, let's say New Balance gets bought by Reebok tomorrow. Is that just on us to say, okay, we're good with Reebok or, you know? I don't, I don't know who I'm asking, but.
Yeah. I, that was, that was my one question too. Like, is this powered by New Balance in perpetuity? Or is it a name that could be changed? Is it something that, you know, usually when people are getting naming rights, and not that this is not quite naming rights, but there's usually a time limit on it, right? If you want to, five years, 10 years, whatever.
I, I don't know the answer to that. Just putting my layer hat on for a second, I will tell you that that can be negotiated. And it's the only question of whether the two sides can agree on what they want the agreement to say.
And I'm certainly not looking to like overcomplicate this and try and figure out all these different scenarios at, at all. I think we need to at least, you know, recognize that at some point, New Balance will, you know, be unlikely they'll be around forever. You know, someone, not, not us probably, but we'll have to consider that.
Yes. And there is part of the naming bylaw policy that they just put in place. There is a renaming procedure. Yeah, built into that.
No, that's right. My only, just going back to what Carrie was just saying though. If we have a policy against commercial name, can we even vote on this tonight? Or do we need to change the policy first?
We will have to change the policy eventually. However, if we can get, I think if we can get consensus here, that that's where we want to go, given where the school, the select board just went. Then that would direct the chair of policy to change the policy. That way we would do a first read and then we'd approve it. So like a backhanded way of doing it.
I think with that, I personally think a policy would have to be looked at first. We're sorry.
So if I could make a suggestion for what it's worth, the policy now conflicts with a law of the town, not just the select board, but town meeting. Our legislature has passed a bylaw that removed that restriction. So I think it's just a matter of a formality that your policy needs to change to catch up to that new law in town. That would be my take on it. You know, as for the, as for the timing, you know, you've been talking about, everybody knows the new school has to be named, whether it's named the same name as now or some other name, who knows? But there has to be some affirmative action to name it. The school isn't built yet. And it will be named prior to the school opening in April. So I think it's kind of the same thing as deciding on the name of this building before it's built.
Well, and so I think we can, we can probably talk about the Dock and vote on that tonight. It's a New Balance piece of it. So I guess what my question for you is, is there an urgency?
There is. As part of this, this phase of fundraising, I think I mentioned that a lot of our donors are sensitive about timing. We're really looking forward to the next month before year end to maximize donations. But in particular, we have, I think, a press release drafted and ready to go. Not necessarily tonight, but that will help kick off what we think will be a jolt to our fundraising campaign. And we do have some concerns that a delay will might be detrimental to this donation.
You're right. I'm assuming as part of that, you want to announce the New Balance.
Well, it would be the, the, the visual that you see. And yes, we would speak about the, the donor. Yes.
Because Ness, if we wanted to talk about the name, just the Dock without the New Balance. We do have a policy meeting tomorrow. I don't know if we could look at this under 48 hours and bring it to December 7th for the full committee just about the New Balance piece, but we could at least discuss the Dock name.
Will the, will table into New Balance piece, hold up corporate sponsors? Is that the worry?
I, I mean,
when you say there's urgency, I'm, I know the fundraising is the urgent part. Cause it goes against our current policy that we have to change.
If, if we're voting on the Dock powered by New Balance, if we remove the powered by New Balance piece of it and just talk about the name itself. Um, our current policy, the advertising in the school says that we can't technically put a name on the building until we change that policy to match the new naming bylaw.
I, and not to, not to complicate, I'm not trying to suggest that.
Just following our own policies, the town bylaw doesn't say you have to name commercial, like you have to allow it. Just devil's advocate, we could agree that eh, we don't really want corporate names on our school building. So we could still have a policy that as a school committee, we don't want corporate names. I'm not suggesting that we don't. I'm just saying that I, I think voting on it with our policy in place would be really tricky to do.
If we were to discuss where we think it might go, and then that gives the policy subcommittee direction on what we want the, because we're gonna end up having this discussion anyway. They're gonna come to us with a proposal. We will then say, no, we, we want the corporate sponsorships. We want them to be able to fund it. So if they have guidance now based on where we will end up. I mean, we can't, we can't say today, the name will be the Dock powered by New Balance because we have to update the policy. But if we knew that that was the direction that the committee wanted to go in.
Yes, I guess what I'm, the only, gosh, I've been doing this for way too long that I'm, that I'm thinking this way. But the only thing is, what if we don't? Like, we're presupposing that we're going to agree to that. Maybe, maybe we'll, maybe people will say, schools are sort of sanctimonied. I don't want the Coca-Cola school, whatever, like I want it to always be Foster School and whatever. Like I, we, and I'm not, again, I'm not saying that we would, but. but there could be an argument made for people saying, I don't want to name our bill, I don't want corporate sponsorships on our buildings.
One is, are we, can we just have the discussion now? Personally, I'm fine with corporate sponsorships in general on school buildings.
Yeah, I am too.
Can we have that? I don't, I think we could definitely have that conversation now. So that's one question, but let me know if that's, that's wrong. And then two, like, what is the implications of breaking the policy? I just don't really, I've never, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not a policy won.
So on that, on that note, just two quick things. One, is Reagan throwing a joke? No, the New Balance aspect is not part of the name of the building. The building is the Doc. That's what we propose. The powered by New Balance is language that we would propose go on the outside of the building to recognize a significant donor.
Yep.
Second, this school committee, as well as prior school committees for a long time, have been violating that policy. So by allowing, and even the superintendent in the past directing the, the high school principal to allow banners to be put up on the, on the fence, to, to, to allow the Best Chevrolet name on the scoreboard. If that policy has been in place for 10 years or more, and frankly, I don't think I ever paid attention to it when I sat in your seats. But I certainly respect it. But it's just something to think about. I don't know that it stops you from doing something. I think it just allows you to have a conversation about what you want to do in light of the fact that that exists.
I think we could potentially vote on the name powered by New Balance. It would just be the logo that we'd actually would, that would be the contradiction with our policy. Just the NB logo. That was my great idea.
At the same time, I don't want this to turn into the therapy discussion where we're all agreeing.
There's two separate discussions. There's the naming, whether the Doc, so we want to deliberate on that. And then I think, I think what, with what Matt just said, we talk about it now. We talk about whether we want the corporate sponsorships or not, and we know what the direction is of the committee.
Yeah. Here's a hand up, I don't know if we want to wait for that.
Yeah, so I'll recognize Rebecca. If you could just state your name and address, please.
Sure, Rebecca, I'm gonna sit down by Willie Quanley in Hingham. I had one question at the beginning, and now I have two questions. My first question goes back to something from last year, I believe, when, I believe you guys had asked the student rep to look for a new mascot. And I think the Doc is an awesome name, but I just wanted to bring up the fact that Harvard men, Harvard women, at one point were being looked at, and whether that would have any relevance, the like, for the origin story of the Doc, if that ever were to change. And then also, just listening to this discussion, I wonder if you would consider having any public comments on the naming policy? Just because when you start spinning it out, like, the political organization gave you money, if a company that has some sort of a political tilt gave you money, there seems to be a lot of, you know, what if? What if Fox News wanted to put their name on the Doc? And that's like an extreme example, but it seems like there's a lot to talk about.
I think, yeah, that's a good question. I think the, as far as future names, it will always go through the elected officials who would get people to indicate their wishes or not. And then the elected officials, if they end up going with the Fox News, can then be removed if this community doesn't like it.
And on the mascot thing, I do, I was thinking that myself, Rebecca, because, and I think we vague, I don't, I feel like maybe we talked about it one of the student advisory council meetings, just about, because the gender neutral language is also a town bylaw, and we haven't changed the name of the mascots. So I think there was talk about maybe thinking about that at some point. Not last year or this year, we sort of have ignored it. But I had the same thought, Rebecca, I was like, ooh, does the name still resonate if we change it? But I think it would still, my guess would be if a new name was chosen, it would still take in the seaside nature of the town. And so I think, yeah.
I just wanted to raise it.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else have thoughts, Tim?
My thoughts are, I think it's great to get money wherever we can get it. I think my, that where I, my limit to that is, you know, donations should be in kind and that doesn't give the corporation say over how the building or how their donation is used. Like, I think there needs to be sort of a wall that, that having a corporate logo on a building does not give that corporation say about that building. And I think that needs to be sort of explicit, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
I agree with Tim, and I'm not opposed to corporate sponsorship either. Our logos on the building, I think it's a creative way to raise some more revenue for the buildings, which is good. Yeah, I guess, to Rebecca's point, too, because I thought about that, too. Like, what if a political organization or someone wanted? That's on the school committee. You know, the committee can decide whether to accept it or not. And I would hope that they wouldn't do something that was that controversial or divisive, so. But this is not that. So I like, for the record, I like the Doc and I like powered by New Balance, but. But I do think we need to change our policies. And it's, I'm looking just quickly, it's not just that one, it's there a few.
Okay.
Yeah, because, and I'm looking at it as well, because we do our policy that does button to the publicist, that, you know, that we do need to conform to town bylaws.
Right.
And that covers the change, that covers ones already changed.
Yeah, and Allie and I had talked about the fact that we were gonna need to update once the select board did this, but it's just, it's the timing of it, yeah.
Is a potential fix solution to take our, to take a vote on this name subject to the, a change in policy that would allow this to happen?
It works for me.
Yeah, it works for me. Yeah. Can there be an asterisk in your press release?
Could we ask a question?
No, I said, I said, again, because I don't want to hold up the donation or jeopardize that in any way. I'm just saying, is that, could you have an asterisk or something in your press release that the name is subject to us updating our policy?
Yeah, we, we, I think we'd be, we'd be thrilled to publicize that the Doc powered by New Balance is the intended name and associated recognition language, subject to final school committee approval and, you know, amendment of existing policies, something like that. I don't know.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that would work.
Okay, put it into motion, Michelle.
I think if you'll vote on that tonight, we'll make it work.
All right.
Thank you.
We can discuss it at policy tomorrow.
Isn't it 48 hours?
Yeah. Yeah. And then the first or second reading can also sometimes happen on the same night. And we've done that before, I think. All right, are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
All right, I will make a motion to name the new wellness center to be constructed at Hingham High School, the Doc powered by New Balance, subject to the committee's updating current policy.
There are a few of them, sorry.
Updating, subject to the school committee updating any and all policies related to commercial naming of, and signage on buildings.
One second, one second. All those, oh, wait, no, go ahead.
Yeah. Because I agree with Tim and Carrie's, I just, I'm not really, in terms of, will the updated policy talk about limitations to whoever is the name sponsor not having the ability to influence?
That is, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? No, okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right.
Especially appreciating your patience in what probably a frustrating conversation is it through.
All right, so we are going to, thank you for allowing me to do that. So going on to item seven, questions and comments. So we set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for things that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who would like to raise a question or ask a comment? If so, I will read my statement. Ben Lock, is it related to negotiations?
Yeah.
Because that's on the agenda later on, so yes. Anyone else on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, so I'm gonna skip this long statement, and I'm going to move to item eight, which is the superintendent's report, and pass it over Dr. Abrams.
So you're, in your packet, as I started last school committee meeting, I put in a superintendent's report with just some updates on various pieces. First, we've begun, as I reported last time, the budget preparations for FY25. We met with athletics and technology, as well as elementary principals, to continue to discuss the impact on the budget for FY25 of special education needs, as well as personnel costs. Increased utility costs as well has come up. We also met with the town manager and the assistant town manager to discuss some of the increased costs as well. So we're beginning that piece in earnest, and in December, we're starting those meetings with the finance and capital subcommittee. The second naming survey for the naming of the new elementary school is live. We'll start sharing that out in earnest all of the month of December to collect more feedback so that in January, we can come back with the results of the second survey. We want to wish all our students who are performing this weekend in the Hingham High School drama production of The Little Shop of Horrors at, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night at 7:00 at the middle school. I wish them the best of luck and look forward to seeing the production.
Have a waitress in her chorus who's killer.
I can't wait.
The wellness committee continues to meet monthly. Again, we've reconstituted the committee and tried to invigorate it with new members. It's looked deeply at the youth risk behavior survey last year's wellness committee report, including other folks in high school leadership have also looked at the data, and we're just beginning discussions about how to move forward with some of the, some next steps with that data. We had discussed previously that Pam Gould was working with us to do an audit of human resources, specifically the incident at the middle school. She's interviewed principals, the chief of police, and she'll be hopefully here in December to produce a report on her findings. We keep working on preschool planning. We hope, we know we'll be back in December with a presentation on what our proposal is for next year. So our hope is to share some information at the December meeting with you so we can begin early and be much more competitive with enrollment in our preschool programs, beginning right in December after that meeting into January and begin the enrollment process. So we'll be back in December with a final proposal. We've met, a group went out to Wayland and saw their preschool program. We also met with the current preschool pre-K teachers and related service providers to hear their input as well. And so we're gonna take all of that into consideration and, and share a final plan. I shared some data on arts programming. We have 47 students in the Kids in Action string classes. Remember this fall, last spring, we tried to pilot through Kids in Action of bringing this program back. And so this is now in full implementation. You'll see the numbers across the four elementary schools, as well as an advanced section of nine students across all schools. There's some information, too, on the arts pathway at the high school. There are 55 students who've expressed interest, 39 interested in the certificate program. So we're grateful to Joanne Bellis and the staff advisors as well, who have worked on bringing that to life. In addition, there's lots of upcoming concerts to hear our high school and middle school band, orchestra, and chorus in the month of December. So it's, and the fine arts calendar is on the website, so folks can see that. We want to congratulate the high school soccer team, boys' soccer team, who was able to fundraise at homecoming to support veterans in need. And they presented $1,200 to the Town of Hingham Director of Veteran Services. That'll be used to support local veterans. At the school building committee, we heard an update on the, the building project. It is coming to life. You can see the steel erected, the slabs are being put in. I think this weekend, I haven't checked it out, the paving of the access road was scheduled for this Saturday as well. So the next big delivery that hopefully will keep, continue this project to be on schedule are the windows, because the windows then allow for the building to be encapsulated. So, so the, hopefully we hear good news and the windows are on their way. Any questions? Yeah. Sure.
One question. I, for the HR update, I might ask, maybe this is supposed to both of you, even if it's not complete, complete, I do think it's important to come in two weeks, even if it's 85% complete, because our next meeting is until January 8th. That just feels like a really long time, so.
That is the goal. Just because of the break, it was just way too fast.
Totally, totally get why it's on today.
And so we lost those three days, two days. So that is the plan for Pam to actually be here in December.
Great. And then, just being in Foster, do, what, this is going amazingly well. And we're about to go. That's, I guess, my question. What is, is there any sort of like Plan B for the opening of school if the building's not ready? You don't have to answer it now, but like, at.
Well, we have the current building, so the current building's not gonna be demolished until the other building is correct, is, is ready and.
Okay, I guess I lost track of that timing. So literally like that gets, the other building's done, and then we just kill the other.
We move into that building, and then that building gets demolished.
The next weekend or something.
And, you know, all that groundwork.
Thank you.
Similar to the middle school.
Yep.
Thanks.
I also gave you some updated November 1st enrollment numbers. There hasn't been much change, but those are our current numbers. As we've been also doing, giving you a monthly personnel report. It'll show appointments of two paraeducators, one at South and Foster, some KIA, a teaching assistant, a KIA teacher, food service tech, and our nurse at the middle school. Two resignations, one at the high school and one at the middle school of paraeducators, and open positions, which include three para professionals at East and three para professionals at Hingham Middle School and two custodial staff.
I think that's it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so next is student communications. Alex, did you have anything for us?
Station to thank the officers for helping to launch what we, we hope will become a new tradition for our unified basketball program. Previously, the police department and the unified basketball team had played a game together for the first time, and hopefully this becomes a years-long tradition. A well-deserving HHS junior, Laura DeSilva, was named the Opry Award winner for November. Like its namesake, our school's much-loved comfort dog. The award seeks to recognize a student who improves school climate and helps others feel comfortable at HHS. The Hingham dance team took third place in hip hop at the state dance tournament on Saturday. And our soccer team finished in the Elite Eight statewide, another strong performance. And competing as a team at all states for the first time since 2016, qualifying members of the boys' cross-country team delivered a strong performance against the state's top teams at Fort Devens. And photography, Max Papalioni from the class of 2024 became an 11-time photo of the week winner. If he can win five more, he will tie the all-time record. Ally Weaver, class of 2015. This past Thursday, Hingham faced off against Situate in our annual Thanksgiving Day football game. It was a close fought game with Situate ultimately winning 13 to 10. And that same morning, close to 1,900 runners took part in. And that same morning, close to nineteen hundred runners took part in Hingham's annual turkey trot around Bon Petuk State Park and the high school, including many current students. And Slater will deliver the student advisory committee update.
Hi, I'm Slater Fairfield. Uh, so we've heard a lot of like disgruntlement about the current summer reading from fellow, our peers. We know that the, uh, English department sent out a poll about that, but we decided to do some of our own polling and that's in early stages. Uh, we've collected a lot of data. Uh, we're hoping to meet with the English department in January as their talks about the new summer reading program, if that comes about, uh, will form. And, uh, we're really hoping to see some change and make it more enjoyable, engaging for students and have it become like a thing students want to do.
We'll also, we also plan to meet sometime this week or next to discuss poll results and any possible solutions we could propose.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, okay, so nine point three, other communications. Does anybody have anything? No, okay. Item ten is unfinished business. We don't have any, so we will move over to item eleven, new business, to receive an update on the Hingham High School Improvement Plan and act as appropriate. So I'll invite Rick Swanson up.
Hi, everybody. Can I steal the, uh, the mouse when you're ready? As you know from some previous presentations, I like to show you a lot of pictures. And I'll try not to talk for too long about those, uh, pictures, but I think they're very helpful in, uh, in telling the story of, uh, past year. Kind of a highlight reel in reviewing our school improvement goals, which now for the first time, as you know, are two-year school improvement goals. Previously, we had always set these as, as one-year goals. Um, particularly happy this year, given the, the weight of these goals, that we have two years to, to try to, uh, really make significant changes. I'm happy to report some substantial process in meeting those goals, uh, since the last time we shared that with you. So let me see, to advance here, do I just roll this? Just roll it. I'm rolling it and I wonder if I'm too far away. Do you think? Left click is not doing it either. Oh, there we go. There we go, or did you do that? You did that, all right. Okay, most of the photographs aren't my own, the, these two are not, but I, I couldn't resist a couple of pictures from graduation, which I think symbolized the main theme of the story, which is onward and upward and despite whatever challenges we would have faced, including the rainiest graduation in, in recent memory, still turned out to be a great day. Um, we'll go ahead to the, to the next one. And this is the first of five school improvement goals that we've been working on since, um, you know, since the start of the last school year. The first is to promote civic engagement for HHS students. We've marked that in progress. On the next slide, you'll see a couple of photographs of progress being made, um, within the social studies department, um, making some really good strides with the support of school council. We spent some time at a couple of our meetings. Andy Hoy, our social studies director, came to, to share progress with the school council and solicit feedback from our group, which by the way, I should have included all the names. We had eighteen members on our school council last year at the high school level. Uh, membership includes students as well as what you would find in all the other schools, a combination of staff, uh, parents, community reps, and, uh, and also myself as, as chair. We also, by the way, I should note too, um, had for the first time a student co-chair of the school council was Jasper Lee, who graduated last year and was so invested in our school council that we've since reappointed him now as a community rep to the school council and he's still working at, at Foster School until he leaves for college. He's going to Australia in January, uh, but intends to, to stay on board with us, at least through this next year to help us move through goals that, that he, like the rest of us, has been very invested in. So, um, here in, in living color is some progress on the civic actions projects. On the next slide, underscoring the importance of the progress being seen both within the walls of our school and also outside the walls of our school. Here's a field trip that's become a, a tradition over the last few years. Chrissy O'Connor bringing her government classes to the Edward M. Kennedy Institute, um, where they engage in a full day acting as senators. And, and those are just a few examples of the ways in which we're hoping to continue to promote civic engagement among students. Last year, we also saw efforts to try to, um, inspire greater student involvement at town meeting and we were happy to see that there were substantial numbers of students who engaged in that process and, and will be continuing to look for ways over the next year to try to move the ball forward on that first goal as well. Our second goal, to expand community service opportunities for HHS students, we're also marking in progress. You all remember, um, that, that I shared with you and Jasper was, was here beside me, uh, as was a few other members in July when we shared our hope for the introduction of a new community service, uh, graduation requirement for Hingham High School students. We got a big assist in that endeavor from our student advisory, uh, committee last year as, as well. Uh, Alex was at, uh, one of our meetings, Nathan Tesler, again. Together, they had done a lot of research into looking at community service requirements at other high schools, uh, really across the state and with a particular focus on, on schools, both in our area and schools that are similar in demographics to Hingham High School, that, um, has led us to a vision of what we hope will become a graduation requirement for our students. On this next slide here, you will, uh, you, you'll see just evidence of how we're building on a strong foundation of community service. And the reality is that the great majority of our students are already engaged in community service. We see countless examples of this. The one on the left, Dr. Adams had mentioned just, um, a few minutes ago, our boys soccer team raising well over a thousand dollars just a few weeks ago. Um, these pictures were all taken in the last two weeks. The, the one in the middle, our unity project, doing a, a food drive for the Hingham Food Pantry at our last home football game, um, also class projects like the one on the right, our, our yoga and mindfulness class, writing letters for Veterans Day as well. We think it's very much part of the fabric of our school. School council is looking at ways to strengthen that fabric and expand the impact. On our next slide here, um, again, underscoring the importance of community service happening both within the school day, whether it's peer tutoring, as you see in the far left, class projects like the beach cleanup, or, um, the, the Harborman Helping Hingham Day in the far right, where our seniors go back and engage in a wide variety of community service projects throughout the town. This has become really a cherished tradition at the school and throughout the community and we hope to really enlarge that impact. And our next slide, move, and, and by the way, you'll hear more about that. I think at a meeting, we, we were hoping, Michelle was at our last, uh, school council meeting just, uh, about a week and a half ago. Uh, we're hoping to be back in January to talk a little bit more about, um, our, our hopes to, to take the next steps in introducing, uh, the potential for a graduation requirement and look forward to, to discussion on that as well. Uh, our third of the five goals is to explore the creation of new pathways for Hingham High School students. This is in progress, but has, has made very significant progress. A year ago, if I was standing here, I would say we're talking about the introduction of, uh, pathways in technology engineering and in the arts. So I'm happy to say today, uh, we can talk about pathways that exist. And the first cohorts have, have been recruited to engage in, in, um, programs that we're really excited about. I would note on the next slide that the vision is heavily inspired by our global citizenship program, which I think will be familiar to most of you. This program has been around at Hingham High School for more than a decade and has become a model for other, for other schools. It's a program we're really proud of, over a hundred students are involved in the GCP. Again, this program's been growing for, for a full decade. These pictures happen to be from the GCP Annual Symposium that happens as a capstone event every spring. We're, we're taking pieces of the approach of GCP, uh, and, and bringing it rather than, from the field of international relations, but into two other fields, technology engineering and the arts. On the next slide, um, you'll see a photograph of the, the planning, which really was done collaboratively, both by, uh, department directors and coordinators, teachers and students. It was really important to us that the program had the, have the fingerprints of students all over it as well, that it, that it not be kind of a top-down coming from the staff, but also responding to what students, uh, were hoping for. We, we asked ourselves, who would likely be the participants if we already had a strong pathways program in these two areas? Pulled some of those students together, met, uh, a number of occasions throughout the school year and they helped us to develop the blueprint for these programs, uh, which are currently being piloted. On the, the next slide, um, you see a poster advertising a meeting a couple of weeks ago, informational meeting on the technology engineering pathways. And on the next slide, some of the students who, uh, are likely to be involved with this, the numbers in technology engineering right now look like they're probably in the ballpark of around ten pursuing a certificate. We, we hope it will grow, but we also anticipated that most likely the numbers in, in this pathways would, would probably be somewhat smaller than in the arts pathways. Uh, this is a photograph from our traces program, the, the off-campus program in woodworking. This is, uh, another photograph here of our robotics team. And then on the next slide, a look at the arts pathways, which, um, has proven very popular already, particularly with students and, and not only in our arts program, but in music and drama as well. We have over fifty students, again, who've expressed interest in this program and, and probably around forty who intend to pursue a certificate. And like the GCP, this will become something that's listed on the transcript. It will reflect really significant accomplishment in terms of a long-term investment in a club and then also meeting academic benchmarks, research, um, benchmarks as well. Uh, and, and really emphasizing the extent to which our school really values these programs on the same level as, as any other academic area. Um, we hope that it will inspire even greater achievement in students, similar to what we saw in this, this art show. And by the way, we've got another one coming up in two weeks. But equally important on the next slide, uh, inspiring even greater passion for the arts. Uh, photographs they're taking last year from our, um, end of year music program, where the, the all-town, uh, band concert and then also from, uh, from the Drama Festival, uh, late last winter as well. On the next slide, goal number four, bolstering the school's commitment to and practice of environmental stewardship as a core value. Uh, about a decade ago, Hingham High School earned the coveted Green Ribbon Award from the, the Federal Department of, of Energy. It's a really difficult award to get. It's at, there are actually many fewer of those awards than there are blue ribbons. As proud as we are of the blue ribbon, equally proud of, of the green ribbon as well. But our school council felt is that we want to make sure we keep earning that. You don't reapply for the green ribbon. Once you, you have it, you can hang it and, and say you have it forever, but important to continue to earning, to continue to earn that. Some of the ways that we've looked at over the past year, uh, at the school council, on our next slide, uh, you'll see reference to, to trying to increase opportunities for outdoor learning, particularly across the science curriculum. There's our botany class on the left, a couple of our community partners on the right, uh, Janice McPhillips and Peter Swanson, who I'm not related to, but, but wish I was. He's a school council member and, and has been for a number of years as a community rep, a retired science teacher who's helped us to retain a good focus on this goal. And on our next slide here, uh, another example of that outdoor learning and, and also just this sense of stewardship, not only of the planet, but of our campus, an initiative that we're really proud of that has developed just over the past year is an opportunity for our teams and clubs to adopt a section of the campus. This happens to be members of the Hingham High School Unity Project, a group that started a couple of years ago who had the idea for this. School council has helped them to promote it as well. This is a corner of the school that previously was very neglected and, and not used at all, but, uh, which now includes, uh, several picnic tables, as you can see, a newly painted wall mural and has been all raked up, trimmed and mulched. And, and we've seen, um, I think at this point, eight or nine different teams and clubs that have taken a different section of the campus. We hope to expand that out even further this year to include even the far reaches of the parking lot, uh, beyond the baseball field as well, which if you've been out there, you'll see it's great to have all that parking, but I don't think any landscaping has been done there since the day that it was built. And so that's part of our vision as well, is to see this, um, this sense of stewardship spread across the entire campus. Uh, Green Team remains an important part of this. This year, uh, for the first time, we've decided to allot a specific Green Team, uh, spot on the school council and invited Green Team to submit, um, a student rep to the school council. Uh, it's Grace LaFond, uh, who's, who's our representative this year. And then on the, the next slide, you'll see again, you've heard of this before, but the slash the trash, uh, initiative that is a hallmark of the Green Team and has gained lots of good attention for the school over the, the last several years, uh, is, is one place where we, we can cite excellent progress and, and ongoing commitment to these environmental values. Those are the two teams that won the fall, uh, season, by the way. The dance team, who, who has won more than any other, did deliver a perfect score, once again, about three weeks ago, which actually means that even after eleven hundred high school students had eaten their lunch that day, there was nothing, literally nothing in the trash that could have been recycled or composted that day. It's an astounding accomplishment. You would think, how is that possible? Uh, they've done it several times. This year, the girls soccer team also did it on a different day. So this is, um, these are the soccer players who were at one of the lunches. Uh, it's a very impressive accomplishment. And, uh, speaking of corporate sponsorship, it is Crow Point, uh, that, that sponsors this uh, and has for a number of years. Uh, the, all the students you see here will soon be enjoying free buffalo chicken calzones at lunch. And, uh, we, we hope it will set the stage for a great winter season, which, uh, will, will soon be underway. Uh, the next slide is just a couple of weeks ago, the Green Team sponsored America Recycles Day Observation as well. It will be continuing to look for ways to, um, to amplify what we're doing on, on days like America Recycles Day, Earth Day, Green Week, which is a school tradition as well. On the next slide is our final school goal, uh, goal number five, build community and strengthen school culture in ways that promote a genuine sense of belonging for all members. Again, we're, we're saying in progress, but can cite a number of important strides that have been made in the past year. It's predicated on this belief that all students should feel connected, whether or not they are members of a team. And, and we're happy to say that we, we again have tipped the eighty percent mark for participation in athletics, but for the twenty percent who are not engaged in athletics, this also needs to be true. And on our next slide is our hope that all students would feel at home on those bleachers. That picture was taken about a half an hour before kickoff at one of our games in the fall. The bleachers became completely full, uh, within the next thirty minutes, but the background didn't look as good, so I, I chose that picture to, to show you. Uh, on, on the next slide, uh, whether we're out in the bleachers or inside the school at our cafeteria tables, the sense of belonging that, that you see there on the first day of school among some of our seniors is something we need to see each and every day and regardless of, uh, the spot in the building or which table in the cafeteria. On our next slide, um, we look also to our clubs and we've, this year again, as, as we have in the past several years, seen a number of new clubs, um, develop for the first time. You see a few of them there at the freshman orientation where clubs are able to recruit new members among our incoming ninth graders. And on our next slide here, uh, I'll mention that we held our second annual Unity Week. This, this was part of the goal as well about promoting a sense of belonging. The students who were gathered beneath the banner last February for Unity Week two were about to leave the high school and return, most of them to their own former elementary schools to be guest readers that day, using books that, that were chosen to align with the theme of Unity Week. And we look forward to, um, planning, actually next week, we'll begin the planning for Unity Week three, which will be in the first week of February, um, this year. On, uh, on the next slide, just a few highlights from last year's Unity Week. There were some familiar notes, pun intended here, because one of the familiar notes was the open mic night, which was a big hit the first year, uh, was an equally big hit in, in year two. Mr. Smith, I'm gonna try to recruit you to bring the guitar to this one. All right, this year it will. And, and then on the right here, it was a special edition of, um, ninth grade advisory, where we recruited older peer mentors to lead class discussions. Uh, and we look forward to doing that again this year as well. On the next slide, some new twists in Unity Week. We brought in a, a, a dance group from Boston called Origination and, and had a barbecue night that same night. Um, this was a lot of help from, uh, from Amy Jackson, our new MECO director as well, who, who obtained a grant to, to bring in the, um, the originations dance group. On the next slide, um, some additional work by Unity Project. This would just give you a glimpse of the kind of events we're hoping to do more of this year as well. Um, this was in April, envisioned, uh, as a way, uh, to kind of align with the timing of Jackie Robinson Day, which happens in April, but not necessarily a baseball event per se, although it was games of catch. The idea was try to get as many students out to the field after school on an early release day to have a game of catch with, ideally with someone they didn't know and to have even a ten or fifteen-minute game of catch and a conversation, meet somebody else, make the school feel a little bit smaller, have somebody else in the hallway to say hello to, and to just have a feel-good event with, with music and fun. And, uh, we did that last year for the second time. We'll do it again this year for the third time and hope to imagine more events of this nature that will have to, help to cultivate a better sense of belonging across the school. And the, uh, the next slide, uh, this, this is another, uh, fundamental, exciting change within the building and the importance of physical space. I said it. building and the importance of physical space. I said the walls can talk. I think in this case, they really do. Those four students were among a small group that proposed a um, a new wall mural. They had initially talked about a canvas that could be hung. And in talking about it, we decided it'd be even a better idea to make it a permanent part of the school that that literally was painted onto the walls. Ruby Fernandez was that was really the visionary here. And um, this periodic table of Black History, which includes um, all initials of historical figures, athletes, celebrities, writers, authors, musicians. Uh, and uh, it's right above the main lobby. If you haven't seen it in person, the next time you're at the high school, go up the stairs and the and the lobby and take a look. It's it's inspiring work of art. And uh, again, another step forward to making our physical space more beautiful, more inviting, but especially connected with this idea of sense of belonging for all students. Um, in the spring, as part of this goal as well, with tremendous help from our counseling department, we held our first during the school day and during the school year transition day for eighth graders. This was in some ways a preview to our ninth grade orientation, but also a chance to really begin to extend the welcome to our newest students before they had even arrived at at the end of the summer. We look forward to doing this again this year and making it even stronger and continuing to look for ways to improve the transition from eighth to ninth grade. Uh, on the next slide here, uh, and we're getting closely to the end here, Unified Sports. We we heard a lot about them in the um, remarks about uh, the vision for the doc and and that's my favorite part of it as well. Since we last presented our school improvement plan, we we had, I think, an event that we can take as much pride as anything that's happened at the school in in the past decade. And that was earning the National Unified uh, Champion Banner from Special Olympics. These are not handed out easily. And and it uh, it really means something when a school can hang this banner. And we were able to hang that banner late last fall at a Unified Basketball game. This program has only grown and and become a more pivotal part of our school culture in the time since since it was initiated and really student-driven from the earliest stages a few years ago. On the next slide, um, some of you may have been in the gym that night for one of the best events of of this year. That was a a friendly competition between our Unified Team and the Hingham Police Department. Turned out to be a great fundraiser. It was even more so a fundraiser because everybody in that gym had had a great time. And and it emphasizes just how much this program has become a pillar, not only of our school culture, but but of the town, really been embraced by our town as well. And it represents what's, I think, best about our school and community. And on the next slide, which I believe is the second to last, um, we renewed um, the recognition from Special Olympics, uh, which is again to say we're continuing to earn that banner that hangs in the gym. And on the last slide, which is, oh, I guess that this might be our second. We're getting close. Um, I I couldn't go through a whole slide show without Opry, uh, but wanted to remind you about this new monthly award is a way to promote inclusivity and belonging. Alex, you mentioned um, Laura de Silva is the the latest winner, right, for uh, for November. And uh, again, connecting with that goal of inclusion and belonging. And then next, wanted to mention that the school was the whole, we we were the host across the entire South Shore for uh, the Best Buddies Prom that you see here, also the Queer Prom uh, around the same time last spring. So so just so proud of Hingham High School being the host, not only of an inclusive event for our own students, but as representative across the the entire South Shore and and hosting this event for other schools as well. Uh, this was uh, in both cases, a moment of great pride for for our school, that we would be welcoming others uh, from other towns nearby to those events as well. And um, the vision that we have of the school as a family, whether it be, you know, celebrating a birthday for the dog, as we did last year, uh, or uh, you know, also welcoming back on our next slide, uh, students at the end of the summer. That spirit of welcome is connected to the sense of belonging. And on the next slide, um, the sense of of a homecoming. This picture was just last week when Claire Schnorr came back from the Naval Academy and got to see not only her sister in school, but also one of her favorite teachers, Miss O.C. Uh, that I think speaks volumes. Again, this plays out again and again, not just Claire, but but so many others who look at this as a place to come home. Uh, and that's what we're continually trying to build. And uh, there's the final slide. It's the best picture of the whole year. Uh, it's about trying to move the school as close as it can be to its full potential. Um, that's Unified Track in the spring. And if if you can find a picture that better sums up what a school ought to be, I would like to see that picture. Uh, this, I think, says a lot about our school. We want to be that for all students every day, uh, all year round. We definitely got it in that moment, uh, for Jack Carlton, for Matt Williams, for Jack Rena, for Ruby, for anyone else who was fortunate enough to be part of that whole experience. And uh, that's what we're trying to build. Um, and we'll continue to do so with those those five school improvement goals. Um, so I will stop there. Have no more pictures to show you right now. And uh, yeah. Um, thank you for the for the time and um, take any questions if you have them. But I know Derek's also here to get up here with the middle schools. But I'd be happy to 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 talk about any of those.
Yeah.
Mark your calendar first Monday in February for uh, for that open mic night.
Matt, yeah.
Thank you. Great. Uh, really helpful to see all these. And this, I don't think I asked this last year. So maybe I did, and I don't remember the answer. I think these are all really important goals. Um, the third one is the one that's probably the um, or not closest. It's it's, you know, centered on academics, but sort of like col- uh, non historical core academics, if that's the right term, aren't on the school improvement plan. Again, I know this is just an update of what the, you know, what what you came up with last year. Can you just remind me why there wasn't something around that? Was it, we feel like those are already really good, can get better? Um, or just the thinking behind that, I guess would be just.
Well, the the goals were collectively developed by the school council.
Yep.
Um, and uh, Michelle, you would have been at that that table. So I don't think anybody else in the room would have been at that table with us. Um, I, and I don't think there was anyone here who who was there for those discussions, but it's very much a kind of collegial collaborative process of where would you like to see this group focus its efforts over the next year? And and those emerged kind of organically from that conversation. Um, I I think there are a variety of other places where the school certainly is really, that's the bread and butter. Um, and and we spent an ordinate amount of time and energy with within the school and with input from from our staff, department directors, um, uh, and and administrators, really focused on making academic gains. And traditionally, the school council at the high school has has tended to move in areas, look at big picture and culture type of areas. Uh, certainly open though to to kind of shifting that. Well, we will not long from now, we'll be developing our next set of goals and welcome any feedback that that the committee may have around areas where you'd like to see us focus.
Thank you.
Sure.
I think just to add, because if I remember the conversation too, I think it was that the, obviously the goal of any school is academic and what are the other things we could be doing to improve the academics without saying we're improving, you know what I mean? Like people feeling they belong there, right? Like that's going to make them better students. So I think that was sort of where we were coming out.
Right. Uh, yeah, I agree. It kind of feels like this is the soil in which the academic gains are growing. And if we if we can address, and there's something about the school council, I think, given the nature of it and the cross-section of people who who gather around that table. Um, for the high school council, it's been about a third students. Um, and and that, those students together with teachers, with these with the several community reps who've who've been really uh, influential within the group as well, has had a really good synergy and I think ability to try to move culture. Um, but uh, certainly with the goal of helping us to become a stronger academic institution as well.
Any other questions? Anyone in the public have questions? No, okay.
I, yeah.
I will, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
I will make a motion to approve the Hingham High School School Improvement Plan for school year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Do the school improvement plan update?
Update, um.
We did that with the other.
Okay, so to.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. So uh, motion to approve the HHS updated school improvement plan for uh, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
That was okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Derek Smith to receive an update on the Hingham Middle School Improvement Plan and act as appropriate.
Give us back to Sherri, because I'm not even gonna pretend that I know how to do it. Thank you very much. It's great to be here this evening. And it's um, great also to be here on the same night as Mrs. Swanson from the high school, because as, you know, we listen to the high school's goals and their progress, there's so much in common with what the middle school is working towards. Um, one thing that we don't have in common, and I didn't put up five thousand pictures for you to see. Um, so I'm text-heavy, but I'm not gonna read everything to you. I'm gonna kind of summarize, hit the high points, um, and you know, welcome any questions or comments at the end. I I first need to start by recognizing and thanking our our middle school council. Um, very fortunate to have a group of dedicated and active members who really have the best interests of Hingham Middle School at heart and and the work that we do and engage in. Um, we have a seven-member team. We expanded that team, and I'll talk a little bit about that during goal one. But um, that team has remained intact with the exception of one member, Laura Accatella, who was a a co-chair last year, has moved on to the high school, I believe, and is working with uh, Rick on his school council. And he's lucky to have her. She was a a great um, co-chair and will miss, we do miss her on our committee, but she has been replaced by Don Murray, who is a parent representative at the middle school. So currently, we have uh, three school personnel, three parents, and one community representative. That's Megan McCusker, who is the uh, head of the uh, young adult section of the Hingham Public Library. We're fortunate to have that voice on our team. So we can just skip ahead to slide number four, which would be goal one. Those nice transitions. I know we're gonna just slow ourselves down a little bit. One more slide, if you could. Thank you. All right. So our first goal, um, obviously the most important thing of any school is to establish and maintain strong partnerships between home, school and the community. And we look at um, effective two-way communication is the best way to do that and ensure an inclusive culture, a sense of belonging for all of our students. Um, we are well on our way to that. All these goals are in progress with various parts of them being um, at different stages of completion. So when we look at this first goal, we um, cha- we challenged ourselves. We decided to uh, expand our membership in our school council last year. We added one parent and one teacher. Um, that was a great um, suggestion by one of our members. It gave additional voice to the parent community and the teacher community. Um, but also kind of um, it met a need that we didn't realize we had, which would be a lack of continuity in our membership. We had two parents uh, who were on the on the committee, whose terms, if you will, would have expired at the same time. The addition of a third person that is in a off-cycle, if you will, gives us one parent voice that stays constant from from uh, group to group. So um, we're we're really happy to have that additional voice in the expansion of our our crew. Um, we seek to keep families in the community informed through the consistent use of our smore newsletter. If you don't subscribe, I suggest you do. I think the middle school puts out a good newsletter each week um, with a lot of great information, not just about our our school, but we we welcome um, information from any other school, other other community events, our PTO. I think it's a good one-stop uh, shopping experience if you need to learn about Hingham Middle School. Um, we are looking to develop a a survey tool that we'll use with parents, teachers and students so that we can gather information about what's important to them in looking to establish goals for for our next um, school council plan. Um, that goes along with our goal of having that uh, two-way communication um, between home, school and get the student voice um, more um, broadly represented in the development of these goals. Um, and we are evaluating uh, on an ongoing basis, our student handbook to make sure that we are um, keeping in step with uh, changes in the community and any sort of uh, changes to school policy. A couple of things that aren't recognized in these goals that in this first goal and the action steps that we have done, we had our first ever fall open house at the middle school this year, which I thought was a great opportunity to really um, look at that that idea of the school as a community um, center, not just for kids in grade six, seven and eight, and families of kids in grade six, seven and eight, but we were reaching out to any elementary families who wanted to come and see what the middle school was all about. So something we hope to expand on in the future and and really goes along with that um, that partnership between home and school. And we've um, also begun our work with uh, Special Olympics, much like the high school, with a Unified Sports Program and um, people from the Anti-Defamation League, ADL, and No Place For Hate, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a later goal. But we are looking to build that inclusive um, inclusive environment for all of our students. All right, moving on to goal number two. Um, this is a goal built around academic success for students and making sure that we're doing all that we can to close the achievement gap for all students. Um, obviously, the strongest data point that we have are our MCAS assessments. So we are looking to um, improve student performance, especially uh, students with disabilities, students in the high-needs group. So we've taken steps and um, hoping to see some positive gains at the end of this plan in terms of student performance on the that assessment. Um, but in addition to these uh, action steps that are all in progress and ongoing, um, we're increasing the frequency, the data meetings happen at the middle school. Um, we previously, we had beginning of the year, mid-year, end of year. We're trying to build in more periodic opportunities for teachers to meet and discuss uh, data, um, because that is one of the the greatest ways to improve student learning is to get people talking about what's going on in their classrooms and looking at um, you know, more regular intervals of student growth and performance. Um, we have revised and restructured our student study team, connected it to the MTS S program that we have had in place with the student supports that currently do exist, tier one, tier two and tier three supports um, in mathematics and English and in all areas, social, emotional, um, learning for our students. But uh, specifically in mathematics, we've looked at how we get kids into our math lab programs in grade six, seven and eight. Um, and we've also looked at focusing on goal areas more robustly in our strategies for learning classes. So those are all things in addition to um, the work that's been done there. We're also looking to add Title I supports during the day in an after-school program to support students with um, identified deficits in mathematics. Uh, we've increased the use of iReady, the frequency of its use and the duration of its use, so that teachers have um, more data to draw upon in looking at student performance. Uh, and our third and final goal is uh, HMS cul- will cultivate equitable, inclusive environments that promote a sense of belonging to allow for social, emotional, physical and academic wellness as measured through data collected using the Fall and Spring Administration of the SDQ or Strengths and Difficulties Questionnaire in grade six through eight Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which you heard about earlier this year, administered in the spring for grade seven students. So we have great data to draw upon using those two tools. Um, we just need to make sure that we're using that to uh, make good decisions for our kids. Now, how do we support the identified social, emotional needs of our students? Um, we, you know, we've had them take these uh, surveys. They've participated in these questionnaires. Now we have this information, so what can we do with it? Um, so you know, we have um, continued our work with our Equity Inclusion Committee and created a professional learning commu- community um, where that was previously um, a a more closed group. This is a more open group within our school community that will look at case studies and um, address issues of equity and inclusion, um, not just in our school, but in in general, how will we approach certain topics. Um, we are looking to involve members of the student body for this spring in this process to see if we can get student voice. I think that's something that we need to really focus on at the middle school level. Um, we continue to work on our handbook language to make sure that that is reflective of what is important to our community in terms of equity and inclusion. Um, we, I feel really good about the work we've done with the Second Step Program at the middle school. We reintroduced that last year. It's a social, emotional learning curriculum that the middle school had used for quite some time. We stepped away from it for a while and then reintroduced it last year with a series of lessons um, taught throughout the, the, over the course of the school year, taught by counselors, administrators, teachers. Um, and we've doubled And we've doubled the number of lessons that we are able to implement this year. We have brought into the fold classroom teachers who are also teaching lessons related to Second Step. So we not only have increased the number of lessons, but the number of people involved in that. And I feel really strongly that when students recognize that every adult in the school is there to help them in this area of their life, it makes for a stronger school community. So I'm really happy with the work that's done with, that's been done with that. We continue to invite families in for, we've hosted many coffees and conversation. They are not robustly attended, but I will continue to invite people to join us for coffee, and I always promise that I will bake something if people show up. It's usually worth coming for, but there's been quite a bit of leftovers. But we won't stop inviting you in for those.
Do you play guitar, too?
All right. The guitar will keep you away, but the baked goods will bring you in. A few other items that aren't reflected in this. I mentioned before, our unified sports program that we began this year. Really excited about that. This fall, we had a unified bocce program for our students. It was our first foray into the world of unified sports. It was really well-attended by students, and the teachers who were involved were really thrilled with what they saw in terms of building a sense of community for all through that program. We're looking forward to continuing that later this year with the March Madness Basketball Program, and I'm sure that we'll see growing numbers of athletes and partners in that realm. You know, I hope someday to hang banners like the high school with the middle school, but it's our first year, and we know we've got, we've got a good leader here in Mr. Swanson and his team at the high school. So if we can replicate some of the work they've done at the lower level, I think we're in good shape. Also, building a bridge between the middle school and the high school through activities like this, I think will also benefit our students in the transition from one school to the other. As I mentioned before, we've also been working with the Anti-Defamation League, ADL, and trying to establish our school as a No Place for Hate school. We've begun that process. We are well on our way to receiving that designation, one that I feel is very important for all of our kids. We want our school to be a place where every student feels valued, accepted, and supported. And the work that we've been able to do thus far with ADL has helped our teachers in our professional development arena, and that's translating to what we can do for our kids in the classrooms, in the hallways, on the buses, in all areas of their lives, so that we can support them wherever that may be needed. So those are the three goals and the progress so far for the middle school. Again, I apologize for the lack of photos, and I promise that when we come back for our final presentation, I will dazzle you with my photographic skills. But I'm happy to take any comments or questions at this time.
Anybody have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody in the public have any comments or questions? If you could raise your hand. Nope? Okay. All right.
I will make a motion.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
I always rush this part.
I will make a motion to approve the updated Hingham Middle School's School Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2023-24.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you. You, too. Thanks so much.
Okay. So 11.3, to receive an update on student services. We've got Dr. Barbara Cattado.
Thank you. So nobody gave me the message about the pictures or the text. So you're going to get a nice verbal presentation instead. I did put something in your packet. I've received some questions, so I'll expound on those questions at the same time. And I'm taking the four goals that I submitted to you back in, I think, August and just run through where we are on each of them because, obviously, they're work in progress for the year. I'd like to think that, you know, most of them will have some completion or parts of completion. Let me move that over, huh? There we go. Parts of completion by June, but obviously, some will continue on next year. In the area of the support program review, I know that was one of the big things that we wanted to identify, an outside evaluator to come in and really have an honest look at our special education services in the district and our programs. And we have had that happen so far. We had Dr. Robert McCarthy, Dr. Sandra Enslem, and Dr. Marlene Dodick, who are all themselves former directors, including Dr. McCarthy, who worked for DESI for a period, come in and really examine how we do things. And as I brought out in my summary here, they were here in the district for three days. I'm glad I wore running shoes. The first day, they came, and they spent the entire day looking at documentation. The second day, they went on a tour of all of the programs. And then on the third day, they had interviews with about 60 people across the district. And that comprised, we had teachers, general education, and special education. We had administrators. We had paraprofessionals. We had parents. So we had a large swath of people who came in, who could offer information to them. We were not a part of those interviews at all. We stepped back. We brought people to the room, and then we left them and let them do what they needed to do. So since that time, excuse me, since that time, they have been going through data. They've contacted us for some additional data. There will be a report written. I suspect that report will not happen until the December break, after the December break. So I'm sort of looking towards January. If it's any later than that, I'm certainly happy to let you know. But they do take a very lengthy time. That's three people coming together on a regular basis and comparing notes of who they spoke with, what they looked at, and what they observed. So I'm very excited about it, though. Really terrific people who came in to work with us. CPAC said they had a really great conversation with them, and I felt it was incredibly important they be a part of the process. So I brought them in, and I think they sat in this room for about 45 minutes having a conversation. So they are working behind the scenes. We'll get to see what those are after they send in the report. Once they do that, Dr. Adams and I will sit down and take a look at the contents of the report and then move from there, wherever it has to go, and how the information will be disseminated. In addition to all of that, I had shared that I'm really, I'm looking at the operations and frameworks of all the programs and that the work has continued into the fall. And I did comment that not at the same pace as I had desired. There were a number of interruptions in the fall. We had some obligations to DESI, which took an incredible amount of hours that I didn't anticipate. We had a new way for applying for our 240 IDEA grant, which is a seven-figure grant. I think that took eight weeks, a lot of tears, a lot of Kleenex. But meanwhile, it took a lot longer than it's ever taken because we were now in a database system that we've not had. This is a brand-new system. It just started. So it had its glitches, and we submitted everything, got very excited, and then they came back and said, "Oh, we made a mistake on a few things. We need you to do them over." So those kinds of things really impeded my ability to do some of the things I had planned to do in the fall. It's not that I won't get them done. I'm not where I had expected to be, though, with the interruptions. So I just want to explain why. It's not for lack of trying. You should be glad I don't have pictures for all of this. Pictures of me crying is not a good look. In the meantime, I think what will be really valuable is based on looking at how we operate as a department and what the framework is that we build our programs with and how we deliver services tied into the information we receive from that outside evaluation will be really helpful in calling all that information and saying, "Where do we go from here?" And I think it's really important post-pandemic period where there really wasn't, you know, there was effort going everywhere, but not one path that we could all share in that time. This is not unusual for where Hingham is. It's very similar in many other districts. So what I'm really, my goal is to make sure everybody is sharing the same vision as we move forward, and that outside evaluation will help us to do that. In the area of curriculum and materials, literacy has really been a huge focus. I've been working with Katie Roberts a great amount of time this year. Really glad her office is close to mine because I don't have to run as far. But nonetheless, we've sat a lot and talked about reading and what it should look like in literacy and how do we assess? How do we make sure it's broad enough for all students to be able to learn from phonological processing through comprehension and where it goes from there? So I think we've made a really big dent in trying to make sure that the effort is the same for all students and that we understand and we're comparing apples with apples all the way through to make sure when we're looking at scores, what we're looking at, and where do we support, and where do we have to offer more support. So we've been doing that. One of the things I was able to do this year was invest in some, an awful lot of scientifically proven readers through Wilson, the G.I. odd set, which is a controlled reader series that will go out to all of the kindergarten and first-grade classrooms in the district so that they'll all have an opportunity to use these additional resources to help kids support their, students support their reading. But we'll continue to work, and next week, Katie will be presenting at the CPAC about literacy. And I'm sure what will follow up is, aside from the district literacy program, what we're doing in special education as well. In terms of strengthening communication, there's been a lot of discussion with the administrators and educators on how we do customer service. How do we get back to people quickly? What do we say? How do we make sure our message is clear to everybody? And I know that's something that we've had to work on and will continue to work on this year. One of the things I've made a practice of doing is to make sure that every Monday, I put out a Monday message. On Tuesday, if we've had a Monday holiday, it's a Tuesday talk. But nonetheless, we're putting out a message each Monday, and in that message, there could be a combination of things. It could be just an update of moving forward, please make sure you do the following with your IEPs. It might be checking in how is a certain something going in your classroom. We're starting to look at assessments. Can you offer me some ideas of what you would like to see in your classroom? And with that way, I'm making sure I'm touching base with everybody every single week. I know the week before vacation, the break for Thanksgiving, I sent out my Monday message and said, "There'll be no Monday message. I want you all to have a great holiday." And I got a number of people back saying, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," because there was no commitment for them to do that, anything with that at the time. The other thing that's been really important is I've been working very closely with the special education coordinators, Charlene Fabrizio and Amy Muldoon, as well as Liz O'Neill, who's our out-of-district coordinator and the assistant director. And what we've been doing is constantly looking at the data. We meet every single week for several hours, and we look at the data, and we look at what is happening in the classrooms and what is looking, happening out in the field, and we make plans accordingly with what we have to do to support teachers. And that's been critical in getting out there. Even I, I would like to be in the classroom more. I haven't had as much chance to do what I'd like to do and see everybody every week, but I've started to get out more. I'm attending meetings with parents now just to see how the IEP meetings are going, what more can we do, and when parents have been writing any of their thoughts out of concern, very quick turnaround to make sure if it's Dr. Adams and I, we're either meeting virtually or in person, or if it's just myself, and it's either secondary or elementary, I bring the coordinator in, and we've been meeting with parents. I had a meeting on Friday in which the parents said, "That was so fast. I wasn't expecting you to call me so quickly." So I think that's a good sign that shows that we really want to make sure we have positive relationships out in the district and have that keep happening. Also, I'm just taking a quick look here. I'm also working with the principals regularly. I have a lot of conversations, and a lot of them aren't just during the day. I've been doing a lot of commuting with my principals. My 45-minute commutes give me a lot of time to chat, and I get calls, and we definitely are taking advantage of those times. And I'm, when they're asking me to come into schools and look at students and help them out with ideas, I've been there. So I think in terms of communication, excuse me, in terms of communication, I think that it's been really important to make myself available when people have asked for help. And if I don't have the answers, to go find answers for them. And I think the principals feel supported. Overall, I think it's been a really positive response in making sure that we find ways to support kids who are challenged by our schools and how we make sure that they can access the curriculum. And then in terms, excuse me, in terms of collaborating with the Hingham families and the community as a whole, I'm meeting monthly with the CPAC board. We have a pretty open dialogue. It's sort of whatever's on the list, what they are hearing, what I'm hearing. We work together. If they're hearing information that they feel needs to be resolved, write on it. It's really important. And when I have those meetings with them, I also bring in the two coordinators to make sure they're hearing firsthand what's happening as well and can address some of the questions that the CPAC will have with us. I think that's really important. I feel it's been a really good relationship this year. I want to make sure that relationship continues. It's important to understand how parents are feeling. That's part of the customer service. If the parents aren't feeling good, then we're not doing something right, and that means we have to change what we're doing. So I'm glad that that's been going well, and I know that the CPAC can reach out to our coordinators if they need to. So it's very open dialogue, and that's important. And then Dr. Adams and I have been meeting bimonthly with families through our morning coffees. We have been to the middle school. We have been to East. Our first one at the middle school presented us with two parents. Our one last, this past month at East had a lot more. Was it eight? 10? And then we have another one coming up on January 12th. So we hope that it's starting to grow, and we hope that parents are able to join us. And we're running around the district to different schools to give everybody an opportunity to come and visit us, depending where their children attend. And then the big one is the training for the new IEP. Our student service system that we have is through Aspen. They just released the IEP last week on the 19th of November, and the DESI, at the same time, released a grant for us to do training. That grant is due next week. I'm in the process of writing it right now as we speak. That's what I spent a few hours doing today in that great new portal with a whole new system. I thought it was done when I finished the other grant, but it has come back to haunt me. But nonetheless, we'll get that done. So we will be doing a training in October. Charlene Fabrizio, Amy Muldoon, and I attended the DESI All-Day Conference on the new IEP. I have to tell you, I actually love this IEP and the revisions they've made. If you haven't seen it, we'll make sure that there'll be some sessions next year for parents to understand some of the changes. We'll send out some documentation. I just like the way they've changed it up. I wish it was landscape, it's portrait, but that's okay. I like the fact, just to give you one example of clarity and why the training's so important, is that in the old days, if you have a service delivery page, we would cram everything, what grade they're currently in, what grade they're going to, their summer services, if they were getting summer services. That will come to an end. Now we just have the school year, and then they have another grid for summer services. So there'll be no confusion about what we're doing. I like the way at the beginning of the IEP now, the emphasis will be on the student. I mean, not under a microscope, but on the student, really putting them on a pedestal and understanding them and really highlighting their gifts. And I think that's a nice change after all these years because I started with the first digital IEP, and boy, have we come a long way in all these years. So this is a good thing. So we're right now in the middle of figuring out what the training will be, whether it'll be after school or after school ends. And we might offer two opportunities for teachers to come, and then we'll offer an opportunity in the fall to explain to parents how it's changed. But that's where that is at now, and so that's why I'm writing the grant now. And I've been sharing with some of our staff the two opportunities and what would they like and why would they like one of those opportunities more than the other, just to get a feel as I craft it. So that's where that one is. And obviously, by the time I come back and visit you again, some of those things will definitely be carved in stone, like the training, when we're doing it, how we're doing it. I'd like to think the report will be here, and we'll be able to share much more about the report and some of the other topics. So that is it without pictures. Next time, I'll come back with a lot of pictures if it helps.
No tears, though.
I don't know if you have any questions?
Matt?
So I know one of the things we've talked about, and you talked about, I think you had a meeting with CPAC last week, just, you know, continued to be slightly short on paras.
Yes.
You know, because we're having, and we saw, you know, people are leaving. We hire, then people leave. But a fair amount of feedback, I think that CPAC has heard in terms of the impact, what impact is that having on the students? I think we continue to hear you for stories of, okay, well, in this classroom, you know, my student isn't getting, you know, what we thought we should get. Can you just talk about like the scope of, so is that a, is that happening? One, I mean, a lot of parents, there are definitely parents that feel like they're not getting all the support that they should be getting as written in the IP. So is that happening? And if it is- And if it is happening, because we're in the process of trying to hire, you know, we're covering with different people, how pervasive is it?
So I could say yes and yes, and not as pervasive, excuse me, not as pervasive, but if it's your child that's impacted, it's big.
Yep.
I think that's fair to say. If it's not your neighbor's child, they can't relate to you the same way because it's your own child. So yes, they have come and they have gone for a variety of reasons. And some of our parents have shared their reasons and some have not. And I know the biggest issue has been at the middle school. I know last week that Amy Muldoon sat with Derek Smith, excuse me, and they looked at how they could re-portion people to make sure there's far more coverage and that they have done. I am sure that if another person leaves, they'll have to sit and do that again. They obviously are supposed to fill those jobs. So I won't tell you it's perfect and I won't tell you every child is getting exactly what they need because they're not. There are definitely gaps and there are definitely students who have not received their services and our parents have come in and they have expressed it. Any parent that has written us and said, you know, they're very upset, we've called and asked them to come in, we haven't ignored them. And asked them to share their story and whether it's elementary or it's secondary, I've brought either Charlene Fabrizio in or Amy Muldoon. So is it huge? No. Is it happening still? Yes. We don't have enough bodies to send around to all of the classrooms that are needed. What does that mean? Well, I think we have to be very careful in how we schedule students, not whether we give students the coverage of a parent, but how we schedule students, which is a very different thing. Making sure that students who have paras, that we have them scheduled first into their classes and make sure the paras are there before we start filling in the other seats. So, and that's obviously not something that will happen this year, but it has to happen next year. And I know that Amy has been working very, very hard with Derek Smith to make those things, those changes.
I think part of the discussion is also to do some planning so that we begin planning for this, what needs to happen in the schedule. It's starting in January through June so that we're better scheduled and better allocate our resources in planning for next year. So that's some of the discussion that is happening. For example, is there a way to first schedule our special education students first so that they're scheduled first and then we schedule gen ed students? Then we can reallocate resources appropriately based upon where they are and we can go into the next fiscal year really clear on where the resources are. So that's sort of some of the, doesn't fix the current situation, but sort of some long-term kind of planning and thinking that's going on and documenting that process really clearly at the middle school.
Yeah, and it does, I agree, it does feel like that's the big, and there's, you know, obvious challenges, as you've talked about with middle school versus elementary school, it's a little bit easier in the elementary school.
Yes.
So it's great to hear that we're actively trying to both solve the problem immediately as best we can, but also.
Think long-term.
Think long-term.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that topic? How is it being communicated with the families, like for the parents in those situations? Is there a timeline at like, how long a student isn't receiving the services outlined in the I E P? Is it like a phone call home or?
So it, it, excuse me, I'm obviously getting over. I was.
They're with you.
Although I'm not contagious, but it varies. And I'll tell you why, because if a parent writes us, we immediately invite them in, whether it be virtual or in-person. Not all our parents are writing us. So for some of those parents, it's been worked out in other ways. So in some cases, if a parent writes a letter, if a parent has written an email, if a parent is asked for a meeting, if it's discovered, we've called. So I don't want to say there's only one way it's happened. And did we miss somebody at this point? I certainly hope not. But if we did, then we have to correct it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, no, sorry, Karen Carley. If you can state your name and address and then ask your question, I think Sheri's trying to unmute you.
Sorry, Karen, we're working on it. She's still muted.
I think she has to mute herself.
Does she?
Karen, can you try to unmute yourself?
She's probably on there.
Okay, is there anybody else who would like to ask a question? Let me just text her quick.
Yep, she put it down.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, I was just gonna text her, but, okay.
Okay.
All right, all right, okay. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Moving on to eleven point four, strategic plan update number one.
So like last year, we want to continue to keep the strategic plan alive. So you'll have in your packet, a detailed document that was created in conjunction with the leadership team. It has in blue what, some updates from the fall and then we'll update it again in different colors as the year goes on with additional updates. So if you want to pull up the, so I'll just highlight for each of the objectives on the strategic plan, a couple of things to sort of provide an update for, for, at this point in the year. So the first one was the focuses on culture of collaboration and community. So we have created a team that's going to be working on a faculty handbook that really supports the outlining of procedures and practices for multiple areas. We have a document that sort of looks like mimeograph procedures that we'll probably run off on an actual mimeograph and type written. And so we're trying to make an electronic Google Doc that can be a dynamic portion, a dynamic document that really outlines the, the procedures for faculty in a number of areas. They could be policies, they could be sort of how to request leaves, name changes, who do you contact for payroll concerns? So it'll be a, kind of like a one-stop shopping for faculty. We've also, since last year, last year, we met with town safety officials quarterly. This year, Ayesha and I are meeting on a monthly basis with the SROs and building principals to discuss emergency procedures. And we've been, at each meeting, keep continuing to build upon each, you know, what comes up and sort of debriefing things that are happening, both locally and statewide. You've, you've likely seen communication weekly from emails, from principals via their smores. And we're working on the communication plan that was presented last fall and the goals that are linked there. For culture, the second area spoke culturally responsive teaching and learning. Social Studies is doing its program review in its second year. Next week, they actually have a site visit where they've invited other local districts to come and visit and spend some time in classrooms giving feedback. So that'll happen, I believe it's next week. World Language has started their first year of the two-year process. So Social Studies will be finishing second year and they'll be here in the spring to present their final report. And then World Language is now starting its first of the two-year process. We've heard about the special education program review. We expect results in the winter or spring. And we expect, as Barbara explained, that'll really be both short-term and long-term kind of planning for our student services. You've heard a lot about our inter-reading K to five program and the implementation. Katie's spoken, I think in the past, about our U D L and tech fellows, which was an opportunity to develop some teacher leaders who had some intense professional development and are developing some resources that can be shared district-wide with staff. You've heard about the pathways at the high school and there are some additional pathways that are being planned and in the works with the hopes that we can launch perhaps a business pathway and a STEM pathway next year. So stay tuned, those are in the planning stages. And you've heard about the piloting of dual enrollment courses as well at the high school and we're assessing the impact of those, how many students have actually enrolled and how to, and where that might be appropriate to expand. The third spoke around healthy, equitable and inclusive communities. You've heard about the new I E P and planning that's going underway to immediately get started as well as long-term planning for the implementation. We're working on a revision of the D cap, the district curriculum accommodation plan that hasn't been revised in quite a bit. So we're working on a draft. We hope to have a finished completion in January for feedback from the staff so that it can be implemented next year. So this winter and spring, we hope to get more feedback to continue to do a revision of the document. And that's an important document because it really outlines the tier one M T S S, what are the common practices that we, that we use in classrooms to be able to meet differing needs in classrooms. Our leadership team has been meeting in small groups to continue thinking about how do we lead equity work in our schools. We've been using case studies to have ongoing discussions about how to address things when they come up in classrooms, in our schools and in the curriculum as well. Next week, no, tomorrow, tomorrow, the bullying prevention task force is going to get started, hopefully to create a final update and revision by the spring. And we've been working on the one-year equity plan and the goals outlined there. In capital and finance, the new, we've talked about the new elementary building is, is well underway and we're hopeful, knocking on wood, that it continues to be on, on, on time. Just today, the technology committee met and talked about updates to the technology plan and our progress towards the year one goals. Part of that is the installation of view boards at the high school as part of the refresh of smart boards in the district that will take us through several years. And the master's facilities plan, we hope to have at an upcoming meeting. I know the finance, capital and facilities subcommittee looked at it and it's going through, I think, some final little revisions and it's a.
Eighth intervention.
Yeah. It's a really well-done document in its final stage because it does really highlight in a high level, really easily bite chunks of what's needed facilities-wise, both short, short-term and long-term. I think it's a real well-representative document of the needs for facilities. And in human resources and leadership, we're continuing to work with the group math partnership for diversity in education. We had a commitment with them last year. We didn't really try to take advantage of everything they had to offer. So we've engaged really actively with them and including participating in upcoming recruitment events that they, they will hold. We've established a hiring task force that's going to establish standard procedures and processes. And that group has its second meeting this week also. And we're hoping we can leverage and move that document forward. We've also engaged in some auditing of our human resource processes and procedures and we'll be sharing those as the year continues. As well as our K five principals, when you heard when they presented their school improvement plans, have created some regular data meetings in the schedule that have allowed staff to meet on an ongoing basis to discuss reading and math and writing curriculum data as well. So just an update and we'll be back twice more to sort of continue to make this document come alive.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Anybody in the public have any questions? If you don't mind, I'm gonna go back one because we were talking with Karen on, and she couldn't unmute. I wanted to see if she can try and unmute again. She just texted me questions to the extent she can't. So Karen, if you can hear me, if you can try to unmute.
Raise your hand.
Yeah. And Sheri, there's nothing that you need to do on your end?
The other person was able to do it.
Yeah, the other person was able to do it. Yeah, okay. Okay, all right. So I'm gonna read her questions. Why can't HPS move staff from other areas to cover the special education or take paras from general education?
Most of our paras are special education paras. The only gen ed paras we have are in kindergarten. So all of the rest are special education paras. I think the middle school has tried to do some creative movement. Again, the issue is at the middle school, but once you do that, you have a domino effect on other students. So that's been the challenge. And the challenge has been, it's been a moving target. You hire someone and then you have someone else who leaves in another place. So it's been kind of hovering around this number of, it was a larger number in the fall when we started. We're down to three and it's just been a engaging, I don't know if you want to add to that. No, and at the same time, we also want to recognize that some of our parent, paras have, you know, been very forthcoming in saying that, you know, some, some of the students they get matched with is not a good match for them, which means they'll only step away and we don't want them to do that. So we've been trying to shift people around so that everybody feels that they're in a situation that works for them and works for the student.
Thank you. Okay. So we will move on to eleven point five to receive an update from salary negotiations. I appreciate that this meeting has gone a long time, I apologize. There were a lot of things got crammed in here, but I would like to just, just chat first. I know that this process has been really hard for the teachers and the paras and the parents and students and administrators and school committee members. I know that it is challenging going through these negotiations as we are trying to get things done. I, I hear the feedback that people who are hearing from the union and not necessarily hearing from us, we are trying to make ourselves available as, as available as possible. I have office hours tomorrow night with Matt. We do give these updates regularly, but as I had done with the Hingham Sports Partnership earlier and had them retell the story, I would like to retell a story because I appreciate that not everybody is at every single meeting. I always like to ask people to remember that we have nothing but good intentions. I, I personally don't do this work to torture the teachers or the paras. We do this to help students and teachers, and I think I can speak for the other committee members, that we all value what the teachers and paras and administrators and all the staff do. I think to understand where we are, we have to remember what had happened during our last negotiations. That was three years ago. It was right as COVID was starting and we actually got through negotiations pretty quickly then. I think everybody thought we were headed for the great recession again and we just ended the contracts really quickly. Reflecting back, we know that the par pay in particular, we, we know that is relatively low. We have equity adjustments that have been budgeted for. We, I think we all recognize and have stated outwardly that we, we recognize it's low and, and we want to move forward. I am heartened that once we get to resolution, that there will be retro pay. I wanted to talk about the budget. I have been very focused on the school budget. My professional training is as a CPA. I've taken courses, I've sat for the CPA exam and had countless clients over my fifteen years at a big accounting firm. Municipal accounting is different from town to town. I don't think you can take even a corporation to corporation and say everything's the same. Things are different and, and they run differently from town to town and district to district. Admittedly, I didn't know much about how things were funded before I got into the school committee in 2019, given my background as an accountant. I did the dorky accountant thing and I read the town financial statements from cover to cover and started to really understand where, you know, where our issues were coming from. And appropriate funding for our town and in particular, the school department became my focus. I think we had a very transparent process during the override budget last year. We heard from the select board and advisory committee and other administrators, administrators who were pleased with how easy it was for us to follow. I, I thanked Ayesha Opong, she's our director of business support services. She presented a clear and concise budget and clearly communicating our steps and lanes and raises and what our equity adjustments were going to be. The override, so when we talk about the override, that was years in the making. When we had, when I joined in 2019, town committees had already been talking about how to handle the the rise in expenses and not having the revenues to cover those rises in expenses. Our school district had staffing issues going back to the opening of East. East was opened during the great recession. In order to fully staff the new elementary school, the district needed about $2 million override. The town voted in 2009 to approve an override of 1.1 million, so about half of that. Adcom then recommended that $960,000 of the federal stimulus funds be used to close that budget gap. The federal stimulus money went away, leaving Hingham with a funding gap. Hingham Public Schools gradually replenished the staff, implemented state mandates, updated curriculum standards and maintained the properties and buildings slowly, year after year. We recognized that the Hingham Public Schools was running lean when COVID hit. It's the reason why we couldn't get the kids spaced out the way that we needed to. We needed the required three feet and we couldn't take some of the suggestions to move those kids out of the schools and go into other buildings because we didn't have enough staff in order to do that. I think that's when parents really started to pay attention to what we had been pounding the table on and trying to figure out how we get the budget passed. We recognized during that COVID year, the importance of getting the appropriate staffing levels in order to deal with the issues of COVID, including the learning loss. We used the one-time money that the government had given us to fund the addition of 32 positions. And that pretty much allowed for the MTSS model to be fully implemented, getting the the paras and the support structure that we needed. The following year, the town was not ready to do the override. They had not socialized it enough. We had gone through a process with a sustainable budget task force that stated, we've looked at every revenue, every expense. We recognize that we are a town that runs lean and we need to do an override, but we hadn't socialized that yet. So because of the the way that the reserves had been accumulated year after year, we had enough in the unassigned fund balance that we could put a Band-Aid on this budget for another year, which is what we did the second year. But that required us to do the override last year. So I talked about the process last year. I thought it was a very transparent process. I appreciate there were lots of meetings and lots of changes. So people may not have listened to every single meeting, but we have made public all of the budgeted information, stated what was going to happen if that override didn't pass. And pretty much we we were trying to keep those 32 positions and because those were the positions that we desperately needed, there were other positions that were at risk of us being lost if we did not pass the override. So when we say that we needed to pass this override, it was an $8 million override, the eighth largest in Massachusetts history. And I think it was, I think it was a tremendous effort by the entire town to get it done. I again acknowledge that our par pay is relatively low compared comparatively. The budget included significant increases to get to a livable wage. I want to define what living wage is. It's a, it comes from the MIT living wage calculator and for Plymouth County, it's calculated to be $45,860. That's based on 2080 hours work year. That works out to about $22 an hour. Our paras work approximately 53% of a full-time work schedule. We are using the $22 per hour as a guideline on our livable wage. At the end of the day, I think we are all trying to get to fair pay for each unit and we hope that we can get to a position where we keep the current staffing levels that we fought so hard to keep last year during the override. So I wanted to first say that and then I recognize that Ben Lockheim had come in two weeks ago. He had asked some questions, so I'm going to go through those questions. He has been emailed the answers and then I will clarify with the email that you sent some of your answers. So one of the questions is, why is the school committee choosing to use the HPS listserv and website to inform the public about negotiations? The answer was, the school committee uses the HPS listserv to inform the public when there are issues or concerns that impact students. For example, we use to inform, we have used it to inform the public about a number of issues impacting our schools and students, including the status of negotiations with the HEA regarding the opening of schools and the transition from hybrid to a return to a regular school schedule. So Ben had asked a follow-up question to that, asking why, why we have not done so in the past and use the listserv for negotiations in the past. And I think we have because part of the negotiations process was going through that masking discussion and debate. So we had used that listserv to, if you want to come out, we can have the conversation now. Yeah. Yep, come up and if you can just state your name and address first.
Ben Lock, I'm 15 Gardner Street. I've been a teacher through several negotiations. I don't remember, and I've lived in the town. I don't remember receiving any emails. I I think it's incredibly important to inform the public about, you know, certain things, snow days, all those things. I don't remember ever receiving communications regarding contract negotiations, updates in the past.
It may not have been labeled as negotiations, but when we talked about the masking and what was going to happen with the reopening of the school, that was directly coming from our negotiations with the HEA on how to reopen.
Okay, I've never, I've never heard any budget conversation or any kind of negotiations, updates in that sense. So I think this is different. I think you guys are taking a new lane. So I think it's inaccurate to say that we've done this in the past. This is a new step.
So when we're talking about budget, we have definitely used the HPS listserv to talk about budget. We've talked frequently about foster and override last year.
Budget as far as salary negotiations.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think that that is unique and I think it's inaccurate. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to combat, you were talking, I didn't want to come up and say this, but I think it's inaccurate to say that you've done this in the past. We, I've never received an email regarding salary negotiations, regarding contract updates from the school committee.
It may not have been salary negotiations, however, negotiate, the the masking discussion was part of negotiations because that was a change in in work environment. So those were, those discussions that we have used the listserv for was part of negotiations that was happening with the HEA.
And something I could jump into, also with the reopening of schools and moving from hybrid to a more simple gear, that was also directly with negotiations. And I would also note that in the past, negotiations were completely confidential. Neither side was speaking out publicly. It's very different this time.
Yeah, you're choosing to use a listener to reach out to everyone in the community.
Yeah, their constituents, we can to inform them on what's going on.
Yes, you chose, you guys as a school committee chose to take in a different direction, you're saying?
Well, I think part of the issue is, as Carrie just had said, that when we established ground rules previously, prior to this negotiation, we, the both sides agreed to keep the negotiations confidential. But since this time, that was not agreed to in the ground rules. We were able to share information with the public and previous, in other negotiation sessions, we weren't necessarily able to.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, can I go over the ground rules that were agreed to? Is that okay to talk about right now?
All of them are.
Just. No, what's mine agree to, okay, so not. Okay, but this was something that was not agreed to, right, that you're discussing? Can I go over the specifics of why it was not agreed to? You're you're talking about, and Michelle, I think you're mentioning how there was no agreement to keep things private, right? To keep things in-house? Can I go over the language as to why that was rejected by?
I'm sorry, are we negotiating the ground rules right here? Is that weird, is that weird? I don't.
I'm asking, no, we're not negotiating the ground rules. I just want clarification to, you guys are saying that there's a rejection of language to, I'm just reading the language here, I'm just getting this right now, sorry. The parties made discussion, this is what was rejected. With the respect of principles, notwithstanding foregoing, each party deserves the right to advance notice to the other party to respond to any misinformation or incomplete misinformation such appear in the public realm. We, that, you're saying we rejected that, right?
No, I didn't say anybody rejected anything. I just said the rules that we agreed to were that the sessions would not be kept confidential, which is different than
In past negotiations.
The past negotiations. So I'm not saying anybody rejected.
I thought you were saying in this particular one, things are different. In this particular negotiation or ground rules, things are different. You're not saying that, sorry, I guess I'm just confused.
So what I'm saying is historically in negotiations, both sides agreed that the negotiations would be kept confidential until an agreement was reached. That was historical practice.
Yes.
In this negotiation, we, both parties did not agree to keep it confidential. So they, the negotiation, there were, we were giving, both parties were giving themselves the opportunity to share information about the negotiation sessions during negotiations.
Okay. Do we, that's, that's, okay.
Okay, and then I'm going to keep going on to the questions that you asked. All right, so second, the second question, who made that decision? As mentioned, this is how we communicate with families. Number three, why are school committee emails coming from Ness instead of someone on the negotiating team? According to the school committee policy, DB, no, BDB, the chair is the public spokesperson for the committee. All members of the committee, including the chair, are regularly briefed on the status of negotiations. Number four, you asked us to update the FAQs relating to the statement about salaries and the impact of insurance payments. So the salary information came from each district's contracts. We pulled that directly from the contracts. The town provided us the information about the insurance cost for each district. We recognize negotiations are ongoing in various towns. We will continue to revisit information as changes occur. We believe the information currently available on the website is correct. So we believe that it is net salary is the salary less the insurance cost is the.
Is it possible, sorry? It's pretty easy to pull up. You guys make it very user-friendly. Is it possible to pull up that part? It's under unit aid negotiations, frequently asked questions. I didn't mean to cut you off, I just wanted to.
But what, before we pull it up, what are you, what are you looking for clarification on?
So it'd be easier to look at it and to refer to it as we're looking at it, is that okay?
Okay, but we're not going to. I mean, we've got to get the information where we pulled it from and so we can't audit the information right here.
Yeah, I just want the information to be accurate. So I want follow-ups on the charts that there are links to, there are hyperlinks to. I'd like to have people be able to see that and refer to it. Is that excluding? So my follow-up question is, you could see that I sent you, the charts and links embedded in your answer on the website for salaries? Because this is, this is really important. This is, this information has to be accurate. This is the premise of negotiations. So I just want to make sure that it's accurate. The links embedded on your website for salaries, to be clear, do that, does that include the cost of benefits? So you show visualizations of charts where you're showing our salary compared to other towns? Does that include the 21% increase that Hingham teachers pay out of pocket compared to other benchmark towns?
Yes.
So.
That's right.
There's one chart in there that you have, the net amounts, this one?
Not the salaries.
That's why.
Oh, not the salaries, yeah, no, no, no. All right, all right, okay. Not showing me the.
So, so all the, can we, can we just pull it up to, can we have that to look at? So all those charts.
Can you pull it up?
Because this is important. This is what's community members refer to. This is what they see, this is what they use to understand accurate information. So it's under salary, under frequently asked questions. How are salaries compared to other similar, at the top there? How do salaries?
And then it's the Hingham teachers' salary. Nope, not that one, the other one.
Yep, that one.
So what I'm asking is, does this factor in the 21%?
This one does not, no.
That we pay above other towns? Okay, how about the other, the other ones?
Where's the, Margaret, do you know where the graph is that has been on?
Sure.
That's the salaries.
This is just salaries. So this is very different from take-home pay. Don't you find that a little bit misleading? I mean, I guess my question is. Not everybody. So the response is for the.
A hundred percent. Out loud, everyone agrees that we, that salaries need to be adjusted. We've offered salary adjustments. You've made proposals for salaries, that's what a negotiation is. This is a website with questions for the public who have an interest in understanding where do things lie? How do our teachers rank? Where do they line up? And it's, I mean, it's clear that it's saying salary, right? I mean, it's not saying the net take-home pay.
I think it's important to be accurate. It says in a statement of teacher salaries compared to our benchmark towns, even when factoring in the cost of benefits, which is not accurate. We're talking about on average of the benchmark towns and you've all included a 21% higher pay for teachers taken out of our salaries or our take-home pay. Right, that's 21% on average of all the benchmark towns that you guys have selected and chosen. So I think it's very important. And again, the town gets this information. They, we don't have that wide outreach. Teachers don't and members of the community, so they need to get accurate information.
So. Hang on, before we do, there's clarification. So I thought there was a chart in here and I apologize because I thought it was in here. So what I had done, I had gone through an exercise where I took the salaries from each of our 20 benchmark towns and I did it for steps in lanes. And then I looked at the insurance cost for each town for both personal cost and family cost. And I made a spreadsheet that shows what the net salary is and it. Using, say again.
Using the average.
Using the average, right. So that gave me a graph that showed at each step in lane that our teachers are either paid fourth to eighth highest largest out of our 20 benchmark towns using the net salary.
So there are 10 benchmark towns.
Twenty.
Okay, I was looking, okay, I thought there were 10. Okay.
And these are the same, just to be clear, these are the same benchmark towns we use for everything across town. We used it during the override discussion too. We didn't just cherry pick them.
So I guess my question is, I asked for, on November 13th, right, for clarification, for accurate information to be up there. I'm assuming best intentions, like I said, as always, and you guys do a tremendous amount of work. But if if it is, if that data proves to be true, that it is between fourth and eighth and you can have that chart to prove it, then, you know, I asked on November 13th and it's still showing the same data where family members are still going to see this. So you guys might think that I'm nitpicking and that I'm just focusing on one thing, but this salary largely, the negotiations largely fall on salary, like that's a big part of it. And I think it's important and parents and families are wondering.
It's just in a different section. It's under how is it Hingham school staff health insurance?
Calculated.
Calculated. And then click, click here.
Okay.
So this is one of the many examples. My spreadsheet was very, very long and this was just one of the examples.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that I think it's important when we talk about, and you guys include cost of benefit, to show that that's not totally commensurate, that it's not truly on the high end. So when we're asking for numbers in negotiations, there needs to be more context there. And I feel like there's not necessarily. I've said this, I think I may have said this before, not a lot of teachers are married, not a lot of teachers have. You know, I think Ayesha, you said 50% of the community uses the healthcare. Because they have better options. I have one of the lucky few that have better options. We pay the most that Massachusetts can pay in the state. My, my wife pays, the school pays 75%, or the town covers 75%. So we save on average 600 a month. That's $7,000 a year. Not everyone is that lucky, so.
And I didn't start timer, but I, I need to try to keep you to three minutes.
I know, this is way over.
But yeah, I thought there was a schedule here. This is one of the schedules, but I do have it for every step in lane and it goes out. I'm happy to share it with salary negotiations and they can share it with the negotiating team.
And we've, we've got that are researching numbers as well as far as the HEA union. We found that 21%, you know, on average, I know I went over my three minutes, but 21% more that teachers pay, that's a substantial amount and that needs to be, I, again, I would encourage you. I came up here on November 13th and I'm done. I know I went over three minutes, but if we're talking about salary and it talks about cost of benefits, I'd appreciate all the information.
Which is why I specifically went through that exercise so that we could see because we have also been saying, we are relatively low compared to our benchmark towns when it comes to insurance. We recognize that. Full stop, that's what we know.
Okay.
And so I wanted to make sure that we understood where our salaries are, our net salaries are compared to our benchmark towns because it will help the process when we are talking about negotiations.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm going to hang, I'm going to hang on to you right there. You just got to give me a minute.
Can you, I know I went over the three minutes, just the questions that I wrote to you.
Yeah, so hang on.
Yeah.
I'm going to finish, I'm going to finish them.
Thank you. I know this is.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay.
No need for that.
All right, so, all right, will the school committee run emails by the HEA for input before sending them out to the community? Answer, when discussing the ground rules for negotiations, the school committee proposed that the committee and the HEA. the school committee proposed that the committee and the HEA periodically issue joint statements to update the community about the status of negotiations and the HEA declined. Number six, can the HEA have access to the district list? You want to come up? Yes, yes, you can ask.
Yeah, and I just want to clarify, it was a verbal proposal that we, we all went through our notes. Yeah, so that may be why it's not on your notes.
Yeah, I was going to say, I have absolutely no record of that proposal. I have records of multiple times requesting closed negotiations. And like, big statements like, there will be no public disclosure or discussion of proposals, not conducting negotiations in the public. So nothing about that. What we were literally handed on paper is completely closed negotiations, so.
Right, it was, it was part of the discussion because we were at different places for that. So we discussed it and that was one of the proposals that we made verbally. So that's maybe why it's not on your notes.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like, on what, on what's paper, on paper is kind of what counts, so, yeah, thank you.
I'm honestly just confused because I'm not a part of the negotiation scene, but I feel like, does the HEA feel that you all are not, like you want to run through all statements that you make on Facebook and all of that stuff with the school committee before they went out? Like I get, from where I sit, and I don't know for sure, it feels like, you know, yes, we may be doing something one way, but it feels like you all are as well, which is, you're right, absolutely. I, I'm, I'm, like, this particular question, I'm just curious, like, I don't know.
And I'm Jaclyn Boprey, by the way. I'm president for the Hingham Education Association. So like, I'm understanding your question, you're wondering if we should, if we think, the union thinks we should be making joint statements? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I don't, yeah, I guess this is a whole lot of questioning that, like, the school committee, you can tell me.
Yeah, I mean, that's an interesting thing. We can, we can, we can renegotiate ground rules at any time. So that would be an interesting thing for both of us to sit down at the table and think about, like, after every session, you know, issuing a joint statement. I think the, the community would appreciate that and it would hold both sides to, like, you know, fully informing the public. That would be interesting.
That was a proposal we made early on and talking about the ground rules that was rejected.
It wasn't in the ground rules. I'm like, looking at them and it's not there. So it might have been something you just threw out and said. I, I have no recollection of that.
Okay, I think we have pretty clear recollections of it, so.
Okay, so then, number six, can the HEA have access to the district listserv to communicate its perspective with the public? The answer is, at the beginning of the school year, families are informed that their contact information will be shared with specific organizations, i.e. the PTOs, and are given the option to opt out. Sharing family contact information with other groups would interfere with student and family privacy. I know you have a follow-up question on that. I, we are going to have our legal counsel here tomorrow and so we will get that question asked and answered for the next school committee meeting.
Okay, as far as, did you have to?
It's that, basically, can we put it on the, that he was asking, the follow-up question was, can you put, the HEA, I'll ask it. Beginning next school year, can the HEA be added to the list of specific organizations that can communicate with the community using listserv? The HEA believes it is essential. I had a view that I thought the listserv was to be used for PTOs and boosters and organizations that raise money for the schools. And that's why we have a question to the legal counsel.
Yeah, so I, I, I guess I'm not quite seeing how HEA is different from a PTO. If it, the purpose of listserv, as you mentioned, was to inform the public. I think HEA would find that beneficial to inform the public. We'd like to have a microphone that, that we, like I've mentioned before, that I feel like some of the information needs more context. So I would just like to impress that I'm not sure why the, you said it was because of fundraising?
The boosters and PTOs and Hingham Sports Partnerships, they all are raising money for the benefit of the schools.
Okay.
Which is different, it's a different type of organization than the HEA.
Okay, but if the goal would be to inform the public with listserv, I feel like that would be a benefit for the HEA as well, for next school year.
Which is what we're going to ask.
Yeah, we just want to make sure that there's not any reason that we can't be allowing HEA union emails to go out to be included if people opt into it.
Okay, could I just ask that, an update at some future school committee hearing as to why it could or could not happen for next year?
Yep.
He said the next school committee.
Yep, next school committee.
Perfect, great, thank you. Thank, and I, I just wanted to say, I know I'm well over my three minutes, but I know this is unorthodox. Thank you for your flexibility in answering all the questions. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Thank you for staying so late. I know it's a late one. Okay, so now that we went through all that, I'm going to hand it over to Carrie, who is the chair of salary negotiations for the update.
I don't have much to add.
Okay.
But I just wanted to let everyone know that regarding the paraprofessional union, as you know, the committee had petitioned the department of, the Massachusetts Department of Labor Relations. We felt like we're at impasse and we wanted the help of an independent state mediator to come in. This is a third-party neutral person to come in who's very experienced with negotiations. And we received word that the DLR agrees with the school committee, that the parties are at impasse. So they are sending us a state mediator. They have proposed, this mediator proposed three dates. The HEA was unable to make any of them. So today she proposed two more dates and I think the MTA rep couldn't make two of them. But we're waiting to hear back on, from the HEA about whether they'll be able to do that. Next, we met with, last week we met with Unit C, which is the custodians and maintenance workers, and D, which is the administrative assistants. It was the week before Thanksgiving. There were very cordial meetings and we're making a lot of progress, I think, with both units. So we have another, another, a number of meetings that are scheduled with those unions as well as the teachers' union during December and January.
Great, thank you. Okay, anybody have any other questions? Anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Yes. Come on up, yes, please, if you could state your name and address. No, that's okay.
My name's Rory Early, I'm at eleven East Gate Lane. I'm just here as a parent wanting to support the teachers. I just wanted to put that on record. A lot of us parents don't know what to do. We feel really helpless. So I always tell my kids to show up, so I'm showing up. And I just wanted to let you know that we really support the teachers. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you, Rory.
Anyone else have any comments or questions, if you could put your hand up? Okay. Okay, so we'll move on to eleven point six, we didn't have any grants this time around. No, okay, so eleven point seven to review surplus materials and act as appropriate.
For the surplus materials, we have a list from, on the maintenance department of items that are either aged or damaged or destroyed. So we just need to have approval from you to be able to discard those materials at the least cost to Hingham.
Okay, sorry, I have to pull it up.
That's okay.
I, I knew I saw it, but I didn't have it in my folder.
That's okay.
Yes, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. To, all right, I'm going to make a motion to. That's okay, I'm going to make a motion to declare as surplus the maintenance equipment listed in the packet and here on the sheet of paper, damaged and irreparable, and to authorize Director of Business and Support Services to dispose of them at the least cost to the town of Hingham.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item twelve, subcommittee and project reports. Start with Matt.
Yep, real quick, SPED Subcommittee is hopefully going to be on December sixth. I sent my note to Sheri pretty late, so we're hopeful that we'll get the room at five PM with a hybrid for our next meeting. And half had a meeting a couple of weeks ago on the twelfth, or not the twelfth, fourteenth. Two things I mentioned, they just did a kind of recap of the Spelling Bee, which I think everyone was very happy. I know many of you all participated, but they felt like it went really well. And there are a fair amount of board members rolling off, so, not fair amount, but three or four. So if anyone has any thoughts or suggestions, I know they're, would be happy to take, take some. Not now, but let me know. That's all.
Alex?
Plymouth River School Council is meeting tomorrow. Policy is also meeting tomorrow. Will take up in under forty-eight hours some of the policies about advertising and sponsorship within the schools. And then also just really quickly, the last four resolutions from the Mass Conference. We had updates on them. The only one that was passed was in regards to the MI, the school building authority and raising the cap up to one point two million. So that one thankfully passed. The other three were tabled, which were in regards to the school bus, armed surveillance, safe storage of firearms, and related to the MCAS. Those all were tabled until further notice.
Okay, thanks. Jim?
I'm speechless today. It's a first.
It's because it's not. Carrie, salary negotiations is, is meeting tomorrow for a strategy meeting and the middle school council meets on Monday, December fourth at two fifty.
Jen?
The cell schools council is meeting this Wednesday at nine AM via Zoom. And the finance and capital subcommittee, our next meeting is on December eleventh.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
We also have one on the fourteenth, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And the capital building tour on December ninth.
Okay.
At seven thirty, eight AM. So we need to post.
That's all of us, right, or is it just?
Is it, we can invite everybody?
I don't know.
We'd have to vote, we just have to post for it.
Okay. Michelle?
The high school.
Oh, I'm sorry, we, yeah, all set. Okay.
All right, the high school council met last week. As Rick mentioned, will be coming in January, they'll be coming in January to give us an update on the community service requirement. Making plans for the year, for another first for the Hingham High School Council. A, two students are going to be co-secretaries of the committee, so that, or the council, which is great. Building Task Force is meeting tomorrow. Jen is graciously agreed to sit in for me tomorrow because I have to be in Boston for a meeting. And then just on a legislative update, and actually Jaclyn, because you're here. I just texted you that Ness and myself and Jen as the executive board are going to try to meet with Senator Patrick O'Connor on December fourth and about school funding and how we can find new ways of getting funding. And Jaclyn, if you are interested in joining us, he said he'd love to have a rep. It's December fourth. All right, awesome. Um, yeah, so we'll report back to everybody how that conversation goes. Great. Hoping we're going to find all the services in our, in our one-hour meeting with Senator O'Connor.
Okay, so I have a couple of updates. The District Equity Steering Committee met last Monday. We were looking at tools that the district can use to assess whether teaching materials are determined to have bias or anti-bias.